All right, I'll go ahead and call the call meeting for May the 8th, 2017 to order. Again, this is a call meeting, the, uh, one, two, three, fourth in the series of so far, budget workshops that we've been doing to work on the budget for the coming fiscal year that will start July 1, 2017, run to June 30 of 2018. Again, I appreciate all the members of the public that came out to listen. This is also being recorded for those who would like to listen later. We will have a public hearing that right now is scheduled for Tuesday, the 23rd of May. Depending how much progress we make over this week and into next week, we may have to change that date if necessary, just to be sure that we can advertise the public hearing in time. But there'll be an opportunity for the public to speak at that meeting, as well as there's always an opportunity for the public to speak on any item that's not on the agenda at the regular council meeting, and we'll have our regular council meeting tomorrow as well. So with that being said, we'll go ahead and move into the agenda here. Item number one, emergency medical services discussion. So Chief Armstrong, I believe when we talked about this last time, there were some questions, and you were going to go get some additional information and try to answer those questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Since we last met, I've gone out and done some additional research and met with some members of the Life Saving Crew. And wanted to, before I get into that, I wanted to just kind of go back and talk about the localities. One of the things I've done over the past few days is look at the other smaller cities in Virginia and see who was or who was not providing EMS service through the local government. And other than Stanton and Waynesboro, most smaller cities comparable to Bristol are providing a government-related EMS service. And if you look at the bottom of that slide where you see Norton and Radford, I talked to their chiefs today, and as of December 1st this year, Radford is going to take over all EMS delivery within the fire department. And I talked to the chief in Norton today also, and he said that EMS has just been put under his control within the fire department, but their service is still partially volunteer, and I'll talk more about that in a few minutes. Just to kind of go through the process of what it takes to become an EMS agency, you have to work through the Office of Emergency Medical Services to get a license. Right now, the Bristol Fire Department has what is known as an advanced life support, non-transport license. And to do an ambulance, we would have to change that to a transport license. And that's typically, you just, you can call them on the phone, request that that be done, they'll give you a provisional license while they're working on the permanent license. So that's a pretty quick turnaround on that. You have to have an operational medical director. We've got that in place already. You would need to obtain a billing company, and I've talked to two of them already, who said that's pretty easy to set that up. The next thing is the Medicare billing number, and that's pretty standard for that to take three to six months, and the billing company is responsible for doing that paperwork and getting that done. And as I mentioned the other night when we were here, even if we were approved to start this process, say, July 1, and we didn't get that medical number until January or February of 18, we would still be able to retroactively bill for any calls that we went on. The next item, oxygen and medical supplies, we've already got a lot of that stuff, and I'll talk more about that here just in a minute. What's unique to me about this area is the drug box exchange. A lot of places in Virginia are participating in what is known as a drug box exchange, meaning the hospital supplies a drug box that has narcotics and the high-level medications. And when you use it on a call, you take it to the hospital with the patient, and the hospital trades you out. They'll inventory what you use to make sure everything was legit, and then they basically give you a new box at no cost to you or the agency. We don't have that here right now in this region, so what we would do if we wanted to provide narcotics as part of the service is apply for a DEA number, and that's a cost of $731, and that provides a three-year license. And that would allow you to offer those medications on the unit if you so chose to do that. And then the last thing is to have a bank account set up to receive recovered funds. So that's, that's pretty much the, the high-level view of what's entailed in getting into this type of business or this type of service. Doing some comparisons of some of the other departments that are doing it, you can see Norton, Radford, Bristol, Tennessee, and the Life Saving Crew. And I put Bristol Fire Department up there just for discussion's sake. The billing services, I've talked to billing companies that charge $20 to process each call, some of them do $15. I talked to one last week that said that they just charge a flat 4% on whatever they're able to recover for you. So the, the prices for the service range, like you see, anywhere from $9,000 up to over $40,000. And that's really based on the amount of money they either recover for you or the number of calls that they process for you. And then the line for medical directors, we do not pay anything for our medical director. Some agencies do pay a stipend to the director. Medical supplies and oxygen, as I mentioned a minute ago, we already have a lot of that stuff already. Radford and Norton both said that they just have one line that includes both of those, the oxygen and the medical equipment. And then the Tennessee and the Life Saving Crew, they pay different amounts for each of those. And then for vehicle maintenance, Norton advised that last year they spent $2,200 for maintenance and repairs for their medical units. Radford, they said they just allocate $16,000 and just go on the high side. They said it's never been that high. Tennessee advised $14,000 for their units, and then the crew, over a little, a little over $34,000, or a lot over $34,000. And then for us, we've already got a city garage, so I think for us, it would entail whatever parts that are necessary to do that, since we already have mechanics. And then as far as payroll, you know, there's a wide variety there. We've got firefighters that are already being paid, same with Bristol, Tennessee. Radford said that they were going to add staff to take on these extra duties, and Norton uses some volunteers that actually get paid when they come out on calls, and they also schedule part-time people from week to week. So there's a variation of how that's done. And this was one of the trucks that I was talking about the other day. You know, I was thinking it would take about $50,000 for a used ambulance. This one's actually listed online today for a little under $20,000. It meets all specs, it's loaded with equipment, stretcher, the whole nine yards, and it's got good tires. Well, we actually had somebody, I didn't send them down there, but somebody has gone. That was in Texas, and they've actually got a couple similarly priced, and they checked them out and said mechanically, they appear to be very sound. And they both have around 70,000 to 80,000 miles on them. And that one's a diesel, automatic, it's standard with a stretcher, oxygen tanks, and includes medical supplies. So it didn't, that particular one, if we were able to get something like that, it would not take much to get that one up and running. This is our supply cabinet that we have right now, as of today. We already have a lot of these same supplies that we put on our fire trucks, pretty much the same supplies would go on an ambulance. And we, what we don't have in that supply room, we would just take off a fire truck, such as a monitor, a heart monitor. So that, I think, is going to, would enable us, if we were allowed to do this, that would enable us to keep our costs very low. Some of the revenue recovery comparisons, I've talked to Chilhawee today, as well as Radford and Galax and Norton. And you can see the number of calls they run versus the number of transports they run. Some of them run roughly 50% transports, some of them are a lot higher. And it's kind of deceiving because just because you run a, a transport doesn't necessarily mean that's going to entail a lot of revenue recovery for that call, because places like Chilhawee, they charge $11 a mile in addition to the EMS service fee. And they have some fairly substantial travel distances to the hospital and back, so their mileage is included in that. So their 741 transports equated to, they grossed 583,000. And like Tennessee, Bristol, Tennessee, they billed or grossed 2.4 million, but at the end of the day, they actually took in 766,000. Somebody, when I met with the crew members Thursday night and talked to them again Friday evening, some of the ideas that went back and forth were two ambulances for them or for us. That wasn't a very popular idea. One for one, them running two, us running the third call only, or us giving them a driver. So those are some of the ideas that were discussed with them, and then they discussed those ideas with their leadership. And I wasn't in on that meeting with their, their members. So just looking at one scenario, if we had an ambulance and ran 2,400 calls a year, we could guesstimate or predict about 1,200 transports. The billing company I talked to said that we could expect to recover anywhere from $2 to $300 per call, which would equate to $240,000 to $360,000 before expenses. Based on those figures, it would be up to around $20,000 for the billing fee, and probably be closer to $14,000 or $15,000 at 4%. But I wanted to estimate that high, just so there's a little room for error. Same thing with EMS supplies and oxygen. I estimated $10,000 based on what Bristol, Tennessee advised me. They gave me a copy of one of their inventory lists that they just outfitted a brand-new ambulance from top to bottom, and it cost them $5,900 to do that. And like I said earlier, we've already got a lot of these supplies, we've already got an oxygen contract with the vendor, so we've already got that put in place, so we would just add a little bit to it as needed. Vehicle maintenance, just again, trying to estimate on the high side, just in case, $7,000 buying a used vehicle. You know, sometimes you don't know what you're getting into, but one of the trucks that we've already looked at or had somebody look at said it was very mechanically sound. ALS stipend for the folks that are going to become paramedics or EMT intermediates, estimated $30,000. A lot of the guys were already getting this, so this is really not going to be an addition to, it's just going to be what they've already got. But I would, there is a class this summer for EMT intermediate, and I am going to encourage a lot of my firefighters who don't have that training to take it, and then when they complete it, they would be eligible to get the stipend. So with all that, we're looking at $67,000, I think is a high estimate on what the expenses would be. So from the prior numbers of 240 and 360, I think we could feasibly expect anywhere from 173 to 293,000 after expenses, and that's just based on the one truck, not two. Well, that's using existing firefighters. Well, yeah. Well, we would put two a day on the truck, and what we would do is take a third firefighter off one of the fire trucks and use to be one, and use part-time, overtime, configure the schedule to get a second one. Well, it would take two a day to operate the unit. And right now, all the fire trucks typically operate with three people a day, and we would probably transfer a third person from the other stations to ride the ambulance. That way, we're not taking on any additional people. But if one of them was off sick or off on vacation, we would use overtime, part-time, whatever we had to do to, to make up the two.
But your firehouse, where, where one of these units would be sitting, you normally man it with three people, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, now, if you have an EMS vehicle sitting there, you're going to have to have two additional firemen for that one vehicle, correct?
Well, for example, if we had this at Fire Station 3, where we have three firefighters already, one of those firefighters would ride the ambulance instead of the fire truck. So there would still be two people on the fire truck, one on the ambulance, and then we would use either part-time, overtime to, to make up that second person on the ambulance, or have one less person off that day if possible.
Okay.
And we could, if we, if we needed to, we could pull a firefighter from another station. But that would bring the fire station staffing down to two at those stations where we take that third person and move them to the ambulance.
Okay.
That obviously would eliminate the need to take a big fire truck to one of these crash scenes.
Yes, sir, that, that's very possible.
If it doesn't, what's the point? Right now, we're sending out these big fire trucks to every little wreck that there is, so that's all we got. So we definitely want to...
I, I think since we're going to be having this discussion, before we just listen to the chief, who's not in the business, but obviously wants to save maybe potentially jobs and so forth, and getting us in this, another city-generated revenue-producing business, and may I suggest to my council members here and the audience here, Bristol, Virginia has gotten into the landfill business, and I'm sure that there were rosy things that were said here at the landfill business. Rosy projections and numbers, and that's been a fallacy. I'm sure there were rosy numbers and so forth when we were going to be in the golf course business. I'm sure that there were rosy projections and so forth when we were going to be in the retail shopping business. So strike three, and you're out. So from my perspective, it ain't broke, chief. These people do a good job, and they have for years. So my opinion is, if, realistically, if there is a crash and there is leaking fuel or oil, then it would be incumbent upon the fire department to respond to a potentially hazardous situation. Other than that, you don't need to respond to anything. Your proposals, as you said, after you met with the crew, was two and one, or three and ever third call the Life Saving Crew gets? I've got a better one for you. Keep it like it is, and unless there's an absolute hazmat situation, you all keep your big trucks there unless necessary. That's what we've been doing for years, and, you know, we're, if we're having to generate revenue to balance our budget on this possibility that you're proposing, then you know what? Bristol's in real, real dire straits. Period. And, you know, so this would be if the council wanted to go and speculate in the Life Saving Crew business or emergency medical service business, then this would be number four. And I suggest that the percentages in the past have not worked out real well. So that's my position on it, period. I, you know, I'm the one that opened the door for you to come back after last Thursday. I wish I hadn't, because quite frankly, I don't think we're any better off than we were, except 30 more minutes or 20 minutes of my lifespan passed by. That's my position.
Well, the one exception to your argument, Councilman Fleaner, is that those other three really weren't being done that much or haven't been done by other cities, whereas what we're talking tonight has been done across the street for 10 years, so they have plenty of experience, they know whether it works or not. We didn't have anybody to ask about a golf course, we didn't really have anybody on the call, that was brand-new out of the box.
Well, they were projections, Mr. Hubbard, with all respect. It's like we're getting projections, and we're trying to balance a budget on a new projection, is what you're trying to say. Period.
They based all these other ventures into golf and what have you. They ventured into those with no solid experience from anybody else.
We don't even know what it's going to cost, Mr. Hubbard. We have no idea what it's going to cost. He came here the other day, said he can get two ambulances. He said, I assume, showed us a nice picture from Texas, $19,000, you know, and said somebody down in Texas who wanted to sell it said it's in good shape. Well, you know what?
My argument is, they know what, we have an example of how it's done, and it's right across the street, and they're fully cooperative with it, so it's not like they're going to hide anything from us. We didn't have anybody to go to...
Well, you vote for it. You vote for it. Just vote for it. I'm just telling you my position. This will be number four, Mr. Hubbard. This will be number four. Chief, if you could continue with your presentation.
Oh, Jesus. Oh, Jesus. Chief, can you advance the next slide, please? That was the last one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Heard a few comments. Does anybody have any questions of the, the chief?
Well, just for the record, this is what we needed the first night you presented to us. We needed the facts and figures and your research done, because what you proposed two vehicles for $100,000 would have actually, in reality, with these numbers, turned out to be almost 140. So you had a 40% margin there that you had missed it by. So with that being said, I mean, when you come before council with proposals, you need to spend a little bit of time in your research to where we can have some solid numbers to work with. I'm not as opposed to it as Mr. Fleaner is, but I would like to have a system in place that works with our current volunteer system that's been in place forever, and, and not just throw them under the bus here. But it is, it sounds like it's a minimum investment with a pretty lucrative return, if you wanted to use, look at it that way. But we do need to proceed with caution, and I'm sure we'll talk more about it.
Well, we talked about the fact that we were going to wait till next year. That's where we, two of you left it, we left it. I left the door open for them to come back. It was pretty apparent to me, and we could talk to some of the crew, if there's a crew representative, that this is to save some jobs from the fire department at the public expense, number one. And he was, I give the chief credit for that, he was pretty open about that. I think he even told some of the fire, uh, the Life Saving Crew members that. Bottom line is, it ain't broke, Mr. Wingard. Why does government continue, continue, continue to stick itself in private and volunteer organizations? That's what it is. I know you spent three hours with Mr. Hubbard, and Mr. Hubbard's all for it because it balances a budget. But like I said, like I said, I don't meet and talk and so forth with anybody about anything, and I'm not going to balance a budget on the hyper, the hyperbole, or the high possibility, the hypothesis that we're going to, it's going to work. You know, that's just asking for some, that's giving, that's saying, council, let's do exactly what the former fools for 30 years have done. We're not any different, but it's going to balance. It makes Tabitha Crowder's job a hell of a lot easier, because she can simply say, we've plugged this $500,000 into the debt. Wow.
We say, I'm taking the approach that we're so new into the budget cycle and everything is on the table, I'm not willing to take anything off of the table right now that has the potential to generate revenues. You, you may be.
That's our job.
But until we get to the end of this cycle, on this budget, everything is still on the table, in my opinion.
Well, Mr. Wingard, that may be true. Mr. Hubbard sold on it, I know he is, and probably our mayor sold on this idea. And our job isn't, by the way, to generate income, uh, revenue, Mr. Hubbard, I beg to differ. Our job is to generate, our job is to tax, our job is to provide services to the citizens of Bristol, Virginia, and so there's where we go. Government's job is to do revenues. No, it's not. If you believe that, sir, then, you know, then really, you're a Keynesian economic person, and Keynesian economic theory has failed this city and this country. So here's the deal. You know, we can go down this path, we can say to the Life Saving Crew that's been here for 70 years, who does a damn good job, okay? We're through with you. I'm not going to say that. And we can also say, realistically, save money. This discussion came up when the bottom line is, if you remember, in February or January, we brought all the departments in, the fire department and the police department came in one day. And the astronomical number of calls were EMT calls from the fire department. I think they maybe had 90, if that, fire calls. We can go back and look at the numbers. It's real. And then the question became, you're taking fire trucks out here to put sensors in, whatever? Fire trucks to do X, Y, or Z? If they're not mandated, unless there's a hazardous issue, then instead of spending the money going out with a big fire truck, they don't have to do anything. The crew can do it. So, you know, you want, you think this is a revenue-producing thing? You know what? Maybe we ought to be in animal care or something, too. Maybe there's ways that we can make money in shelters for animals. I mean, come on, think outside the box. I mean, there's got to be more ways government can take more of our money and do more of what we're supposed to do as individuals. So, you know, if you want to look at those people and tell them that they haven't done a good job for 70 years, and we're, no, just, okay?
I'm not saying they haven't done a good job.
But you want to take from what they're doing as volunteers, and you want to take it from them and give it to the city on a possibility. That's what you're saying.
Well, I, I work for the city, and I'm trying to find things that help the city, and...
You don't work for the city.
I understand the situation, and I'm, I'd say I'm keeping an open mind on it.
Well, but you don't work for the city. You don't work for the city. Let's make sure we're right. If I work for the city, I'm getting out of here.
The city is the citizens. We work for the citizens of Bristol.
We work for the people. We don't work for the city of Bristol, Virginia.
Well, the city is the citizens. That's what I meant. We work for the citizens of this city.
Okay. So there's a word, there's a word shift.
In order to keep their taxes as low as possible, we have to examine all sources of revenue.
Well, you've raised it more than anybody, you and Mr. Hall.
I know, and I ran on that. Mr. Fleaner, I ran on that.
Yeah, but we're going to end up taking that money that's supposed to be going on tanks.
It hasn't been spent, it's accumulating in the bank account.
Well, okay. Well, we need to have a meeting and also decide and put it in a lockbox. We know how that works with Social Security, so we need to put that money in a lockbox to make darn sure the city can't rape it.
Well, you know, Al Gore thought of that. You wouldn't want to agree with him, would you?
I don't agree with anything that a liberal Democrat says, Mr. Hubbard.
All right. Do you have any comments?
I want to know if the presentation through, or we...
Yes, sir.
Okay. I want to hear from the Life Saving Crew.
Amen.
I want the Life Saving Crew to come up. You've heard a couple of days of back and forth questions, so tell us your side of the story.
Could he, can you get the microphone down for him, please? My name is Tony Cox. I'm president, CEO of Bristol Life Saving Crew, Board of Directors. I want to first thank you for letting me speak. We really haven't had a chance to address some of the questions that's come out. As I said, we have been in business for 70 years this year. It's our 70th anniversary. Give you some facts and stuff that we heard the other day. We do not have any full-time employees. There's a question of how many full-time employees from the... We have part-time employees and volunteers. I think 32, uh, part-time, and as of last Thursday, we have another volunteer, 19 volunteers. We've been doing this for 70 years without a penny of taxpayer money given to us. We've received nothing from the city, nothing, and no taxpayer money whatsoever. We generate our own income through billing and donations, such as United Way, and some of the standby events that we do for the facilities in this, this, and also in Tennessee. We are a nonprofit, private organization that we feel like the city should not be take, try to take us over, and we, excuse me, I'm going to put my glasses on. All of our board members, officers, including outside board members, are volunteers. We, we receive no money for what we do. The only ones we pay are the part-time employees who run a lot of the calls during the days and evenings when volunteers are not available. As you know, volunteerism has been hurt for years now. Donations are bottoming out, and still, for the last 70 years, we have dedicated ourselves to this city, and we... we have dedicated ourselves to this city, and we, uh, we're very grateful that we're allowed to run here. A few things I'd like to say is, uh, the, it's true, it takes three to six months for insurance agents to come in. If you have six months, but you also, once you file in six months, it's about another three to four months before you actually receive the money. Monies that we were receiving now, we built last year. You know, so you're, you're looking at possibly nine, nine months. We, uh, a little bit of information that they'd asked us about, we, uh, when I was here the other day, that, whether, asking the chief, and I tell him I can find some. We had, you ask about how many ambulances we have. We have five ambulances, two rescue trucks, one mass casualty trailer. Uh, I think it's up to fifty. Is it about, if we could handle fifty casualties if, if needed so. Uh, we have, uh, two four-wheeler ATVs for, uh, rough terrain, and also for a lot of standby, such as, uh, the football game down at Virginia High. You can't get an ambulance onto the field down there. Uh, so we have to, we have set up a four-wheel drive ATV to, uh, be it with stretcher and stuff, to be able to go inside, get the player or citizen, bring them out. All at still no cost to the city. Uh, we agreed when we did our, uh, new standby proposal that all standbys for parts and wrecks, school systems, we would do for, uh, Virginia, uh, Bristol, Virginia for free. The, uh, standbys we do for outside agencies, such as if Rhythm and Roots wanted us, uh, downtown race nights, uh, concerts, stuff that would, people would come in, then we do charge a fee. Uh, we're sending an ALS ambulance with two people to these events, sometimes setting, uh, for hours. Uh, at the track, it was up to sixteen to twenty hours at a time. So we do have to recruit some of our monies. We have never been in the business of making money. I've been here twenty-three years, and I can't ever see us making a profit. For years to make, to keep, stay flow, we've had to borrow from our capital expenses, which we set up to replace equipment, equipment, uh, you're looking at, oh, almost two hundred thousand dollars to replace an ambulance with equipment. We get, uh, grants sometimes, and even half grants, we're looking at eighty, ninety thousand dollars out of our own pocket. So that's what the capital grants were set up for. Uh, we, we earn that money by, uh, donations, uh, like I say, United Way and billing. Uh, we've never asked the city to support us. Uh, we've never asked the taxpayers to support us. We, we, we enjoy doing this. We wouldn't do it for free if we didn't. This is, this is us helping for seventy years, and just, I brought some figures that they had asked about it. The maintenance fees and all this other medical supplies and stuff. You'd asked for it last time. I'm not sure if you.
I think that just, you had like forty-five hundred calls a year. Was that correct?
It averaged, I've seen it in the high threes, and I've seen it in the low fives, uh, so probably average is probably about forty-five. So, uh, medical supplies, forty-eight thousand. Billing supplies, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, billing expenses, this costs us forty-three thousand dollars just to be billed, uh, just to build these, uh, our billing company. We pay them. You gotta realize that whatever you bill is not what you're gonna give.
That's right.
We went through some calls the other day where we had billed an ALS fee of four hundred, and approximately four hundred and fifty dollars for an ALS call. We got a hundred and sixty-two. The new changes is EMS is the last people to get your insurance money. The hospital gets the first bid on it, the doctors, the anesthesiologists, the whatever, and if there's anything left, we get. You know, we have approximately about thirty-two percent write-off. Uh, Virginia is, uh, has a higher, uh, Bristol, Virginia has a higher, uh, poverty rate than Bristol, Tennessee. I was thinking in the twenties percent type, uh, I know, uh, whatever you call Obamacare, uh, was said that everybody now will have insurance. That's not true. Everybody doesn't have insurance. Uh, we go out all the time on people that doesn't have insurance. There are certain things, if you run one person five times in the same week, they'll probably pay you once. That's it. The other four times, you do it on your own. And they also, they grade you on what call you run. It's, it used to be what you went out on, if you went out on chest pains, that was considered ALS, okay? Now, it's basically, you go out there, if you can't absolutely prove that that was a chest pain, you're not gonna get an ALS call. They're, they're only gonna pay you a BLS call if you're lucky. Uh, you have to basically prove now. You have to be a doctor and a field and prove. If we put them on the monitor and see that they're having a heart attack, that's one thing, but if they're having chest pains, we put them on the monitor, uh, they can downgrade that, not pay you a third of what you actually billed for. You know, uh, on the, the calls, the one question I had was, uh, on wrecks, you said something about fire department not going out on every, well, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that's required anyway for fire suppression on a lot of this, a lot of these wrecks, so they would have to basically go out every week. But the one question on what you asked about, uh, fire truck going out on all these calls with us, you gotta realize that that's not our protocol. We don't, we don't ask that they go out on all these calls. That's the city's protocol. Or perhaps the fire department or dispatch, whatever. They set up the protocol, not us. We never ask if they go out on all these calls. You know, there are call, there are certain calls, uh, in, in Virginia, everything practically is emergency traffic. In Tennessee, they have a priority system, and the only things we would request is priority one calls, which is car wrecks, cardiac rest, respiratory rest, shooting, stabbing, mass casualty, of course, and patients six, seven, eight hundred pounds. That would be the only thing we really need. The rest of, even chest pain and difficulty breathing, it's not a priority one call, and we don't request them. Uh, now, I know every once in a while that we'll have a green crew or that will think they need the help, okay? Uh, and, but they learn, you know, that eventually they go out on this guy so many times that they learn you don't need the extra help. And we're, we're not requesting that they do go out on every call. It's a waste of us, too, to have to wait. Right on one of the, I don't, they've changed priorities so much that it used to be, if we knew what we're going on, we could cancel them before they even took off. I've canceled them before they even got even on the engine. Then it went to, we couldn't cancel them until everybody was on scene, we examined the patient, determined if it was life-threatening or not, then we could cancel. You know, and it's ridiculous. We're big right now, the patient out, and here they, they kind of pulling up, and you're going, you know, they shouldn't even have to come. Shouldn't have been here. So I wanna emphasize, it's not us asking for this help on every single little thing, you know, it's, it's your protocol. Nowhere in our protocol does it say, request an engine or whatever they got on the scene.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Let me ask you, sir, um, before we, before I forget this, and I can write my notes down, but I can't always read my writing, so I want you to understand. So how long has it been going on that the big fire truck comes out and so forth, responding and so forth? How long has this been going on?
Years. I've been there twenty-three years, and
And the big trucks been coming out, so the protocols?
Well, like I say, sometime, sometimes protocol says you do that, sometime. It, it's shifted. When he first came here, I think after two or three weeks, being, I'm sorry, this is Tim Sayer, he's captain.
I know, yes, hello, Mr. Sayer.
Bristol Life Saving Crew. We had met, and we told him that we thought it was completely unnecessary, you know, and it, we didn't think we should have to wait, you know, all this time, and them coming from across town, over, when we know we didn't.
So you had to wait, actually wait for them to come because of some protocol that the city of Bristol, Virginia has put in place?
No, we, we had to wait to cancel.
Wait to cancel?
Yeah.
Holy moses.
There was a time when we had to wait till we got on scene, examined the patient, and decided, and that this, we didn't need them, but there's a lot of time we can go and we know we don't need it. If Granny falls out of bed, and she's fell out fifteen times in the past month, and we can go pick her up, but, you know, at some times, the, the protocol says, gotta roll that engine with them.
We need to look at protocol.
The executive secretary, uh, uh, office manager, uh, two weeks ago, uh, requested that, they told them they had the engine two, I think, in route, and she said, we, we're not gonna need them. We've got three people, and
Engine two shows up anyway?
It shows up anyway. She asked me, she asked me why, and I said
Who knows? Yeah. Let me ask you something.
It's this week's protocol.
Let me ask you another question, Mr. Cox. Yeah, yeah. Well, we've seen the numbers on how many times they've responded to calls back in February, this, the fire trucks and so forth and so on, and it jacked the numbers up incredibly. But you saw the little ambulance on the screen here that can be bought in Texas for nineteen K? Did you see that?
Yeah.
And you've got experience in ambulances and so forth, buying them and so forth and so on, right?
Yes.
Now, why don't you just tell everybody up here on city council, in addition to it, assume that that is worthy of being accredited and so forth, just make, I'm not even gonna go there at that assumption. How much more would it cost to fit that ambulance for service, sir? To meet regs and so forth? Approximately?
I, I don't know what, when they say fully equipped, I don't know what was on.
BLS.
BLS? Okay, well, BLS, uh, thirty-five thousand for a monitor. Uh, I don't know what equipment you all have.
Just, you don't have to answer him. Just answer us. Answer our questions, okay?
Uh, approximately thirty-five thousand for a monitor. Uh, drug box, uh, varies, uh, we, he, he was right. We don't, we don't get to exchange out like a lot of areas do. So we have to buy our own drugs. And, uh, I think you said something about if they, if they decide to carry narcotics, it's, it's not gonna be a decision. You must, you must carry whatever your O M D, this protocol is, so you're gonna have to buy the narcotics. You're gonna buy, ha, have to buy every medicine. Uh, in the office today, we were sending back, uh, drugs that have been recalled. It's gonna cost us big time. No, uh, uh, glucagon right now for diabetics, if, uh, is, has went from several dollars when I first started, it's now, uh, almost six hundred dollars a bottle.
A bottle.
And it runs out, you throw it away.
I understand there's a cot.
It runs out more.
I understand that they've changed regulations on cots, too. I've done a little research on this, uh, the cots and so forth that you put in the back. You can't tell by the screen if that cot was approved, uh, something that was reg. Okay, how much is a cot under federal regs right now alone, set aside the monitor of thirty-five thousand dollars? How much is that co, what a cot that meets federal regulations cost, sir?
Well, as of July the first, any ambulance that, any new ambulance, and any ambulance that gets remounted, which that means taking the box. Okay, uh, approximately eighteen thousand for a non-motorized cot. The new, uh, the government's gonna, uh, put a regulation in, this is July the first, that all remounts and all new ambulances has to have a mounting system that grabs the cot, keeps, if the ambulance was turned over, that cot would stay where it's at, and the patient. That's forty thousand dollars per ambulance.
Forty per ambulance?
Yes.
Are you all equipped now for that, sir?
We have started to process by buying three of the new cots. They're the new electric cots. You push a button, and the wheels go up, down, whatever. Now, the next, the next phase will be, we'll have to have the mount systems put in, and we're gonna need two more cots. Also, we bought three right now. One for the primary at station nail, one for rescue three, and one for the, the next backup. And then the two others, we, if they change out, they can just take the cot with them.
So?
But we have to, we're gonna initially have to have both.
Besides, the, assuming that this picture that they show, you can get that ambulance for nineteen-nine at a bargain in Texas. Just assume that for a moment. If I understood what you're saying correctly, there is an additional fifty-three thousand dollars just for a heart monitor and for cot to meet government regulations. Is that correct?
Should be up to.
Up to.
I don't know, I, I only know the price is that, uh, the monitors that we have and the, the cots that we have, but, uh,
You buy used ambulances?
No.
No? Why don't you do that?
I've worked for other services that are not like the Bristol Life Saving Crew, that bought, and I'm not saying that that's junk, but we bought junk. I went to Nashville, taking three trucks one day and came back with one for a former company. Uh, they all,
Junk?
All three broke down on the way, and we got one of them fixed to get back.
And that's not something you want to have in an emergency situation where you're responding to somebody being seriously ill or having an accident, is it, sir?
I wouldn't.
All right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Cox, and thank you for everything you do and all your friends and your crew members here.
Do you guys answer calls in Tennessee, Bristol, Tennessee?
Do we run?
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, in, in the state of Virginia, you're required to sign a mutual aid with any municipality that borders your municipality.
Yeah.
Uh, to also respond, like, we, we respond into Tennessee, uh, we respond, uh, Getson, Tenderhook area, Orson County Fire Rescue. Uh, anywhere we're called that, we have something available. You know, if, if both your ambulances out, and they call you, you don't have to respond, but if you sign that agreement, and you say, well, we're avail, we're available, uh, then you need to try to go. And one of the things that's really, we run into, especially in the county, is we only get paid for about a third of the calls that go out there. Approximately thirty, I think thirty-three percent of the time, we get called out there. All the way to Mendota sometimes, uh, we get canceled. So that took a service truck out of the service in the ten, in the Bristol, Virginia. All the way out there, we have to wait till they get back to put it back in service, so we don't get paid for cancellations. The, another twenty-some percent, uh, was, we would go on a call where we were gonna meet one of their BLS trucks, basic life support trucks. They'd only have the EMT or something. Well, when we get out there, they've got the patient on the truck, and we can't drag that patient out of that ambulance once they're on our, put it on ours. So our paramedic gets in the back of the truck with them, and rides in, and if, he'll take whatever equipment he needs. Well, that downs our truck, our other truck has to just fall into the hospital. Plus, we're not allowed to bill for that because only one EMT can bill a company, and that's the truck that they'd see. Even though we did the ALS work, uh, and they will, uh, go to the hospital, so we have to follow them in, that downs that truck right there. And the third, the other third is, we actually go out there and get a call. They may be busy or not have enough, uh, people or whatever on another call, so we'll actually get the bill for that. Now, when they came, when they come into the city, like if all of our units are not available, they're probably in the ninety percent that they're gonna get billed because we don't have BLS trucks. We, all our trucks are ALS. We don't have BLS, so we don't meet them on scene. They just go pick the patient up and go. Now, there is a percentage of, when they do get there, that patient might say, I'm not going, so they do, they will get canceled on our, but it's, it's a lot lower percentage than us going out there when we get canceled. You know, they may clear up from our call, get, be able to get there before we can anyway, so.
Of the forty-five hundred calls that you go out on, excuse me, uh, rough percentage of, how many of those do you actually bill for? Or get the bill for?
Well, we don't bill for refusals. We don't, uh, let's see. Probably, yeah, that's probably a good number, about eighteen hundred.
That you get to bill for, or some sort of billing?
Yeah. Uh, and you gotta realize, what we bill for is not close to what we're, what you get.
Yeah, I understand.
Like I say, we have approximately thirty-two percent write, write-offs, I mean, and then you get the ones that's, uh, yeah.
Yeah. So what you're saying, what I'm hearing, counting the write-offs and the no bills, you're lucky to come out and get fifty percent of your calls paid for?
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if it wasn't for the donations, United Way, and us raising money wherever we can, uh, there's something I've learned. it, there's something I've learned in my, uh, I've been in this business now for twenty-seven years, and I've worked at seven nine-one-one companies, uh, I've always volunteered here, but for pay, I've worked at seven. Nine-one-one, you can never make money. You will never make money. Now, the other, these agencies that do, uh, do convalescent, uh, Ambulance Service Bristol, every time they run a co- well, ninety percent of the calls they run are pre-approved to be paid before they ever get in that ambulance and go on it. Uh, Sullivan County right now just asked for one point three million dollars to, uh, back them up because they're out of money. They've lost so much money, one point three million, just to keep them going. Churchill, Tennessee, just shut down, uh, 'cause they couldn't make it. Uh, and a lot of these, even with convalescent calls, they're, they're not gonna make it. 'Cause I, they always joke with me, I've shut down five rescue squads, I mean, you know, been there. It's, it's not, if you're in it for the money, you, I don't care who you are, uh, you can't make it. It's one of the worst paying jobs in the country. Uh, I've always said I'd rather do it volunteer than do it for money.
Let me ask you something, Mr. Cox, you said that, sir, if a firefighter who in the city of Bristol, Virginia makes over forty thousand dollars, how would that compare if they were to put on a, a ambulance and so forth? How would that compare to what people in the private sector and so forth are volunteers? How would that compare, forty-some thousand dollars plus stock count benefits, health insurance and so forth and so on? Can you give us some sort of comparison to a government employee doing this job, vis-à-vis what otherwise-
You have to realize, first of all, that, that's kind of, that's kind of blurry. When, when you say a guy's making forty thousand dollars-
Actually more.
That guy is working more overtime a lot of times than he's working regular time.
For, if he does your work?
Yeah. My, uh, for a police officer making forty thousand dollars and, uh, one of us making forty thousand dollars, that police officer's doing it on a lot less time, uh. Yeah, uh, we're paying, uh, like, uh, for paramedics, average of fourteen dollars an hour right now. Okay, but that guy has to work, wh- what I used to work was eighty, forty. I would work eighty hours of regular time in two weeks and forty hours of overtime. That was billing, I mean, that was an extra duty. That's what I had to work to make the same as a lot of other people working forty-hour jobs that, you know. The only way you'd make it is work. I had to go to Nashville here a couple years ago, and they told me that I shouldn't be allowed to work over twelve hours a day, and I was working thirty-six, forty-eight when I was there, when I was working over a hundred and eight hours. They had nobody to work, so I'd go in Monday morning and stay till Friday evening. Uh, there is no regulations, you know, they kept quoting me D O T regulations down our P M S board in Nashville. There are no D O T regulations. I'm not a truck driver, I, I don't drive so many hours and sleep so many hours. If it takes forty-eight hours, then that's what I work.
I, I wanna say this, and I'm, I'm, I'll leave it to the rest of my council, I'm gonna ask any questions, you, Mr. Cox, I appreciate you. Uh, I am gonna ask our city attorney to tell me if there's some state law mandate, I don't care about the city code, I'm asking if there's a state law mandate that our fire crews with big trucks attend to accidents or whatever, respond. Is there a requirement, statutory requirement that we do so? If there isn't, why are we doing it? Because there's a, it seems to me there's an inordinate cost, and it seems to me by not doing it, the problem that, uh, we've had in the past was the cost of trucks going out and so forth and so on. But it's, if, if, if it's not required by law, then this needs to cease, and there's a lot of-
Let me clarify, you wanna know whether or not there's a statutory requirement that fire, that a fire engine go on what types of calls?
I'm talking about automobile-
I think he means, do we have to have E M F service?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, that's a nut, that's a nutshell way to put it, but the bottom line is, is, are we required statutorily, Mr. Eads, by Virginia code, not, I don't care about the city charter or city code, I've heard so many screw-ups and that thing, that needs to be revamped, and that's gonna be something for next year or the rest of this year for you. Um, but I, I'd like to know that, because if it hasn't, isn't mandated, it should never have been done.
Well, you, the issue that came up Thursday morning, a sovereign immunity issue, so I did some research on that. I don't think there's any mandate that a fire engine go on any certain call, or that the M S, or that the city provide E M S services. Um, that's under the, um, Edwards v. City of Portsmouth in nineteen eighty-nine, Virginia Supreme Court case. Supreme Court said that that's a governmental en- uh, governmental function that cities can provide to, uh, its citizens. Uh, it's not a requirement. I mean, and I think you can look at any small community and, um, you can see that towns necessarily don't, uh, provide E M S services or, um, fire service. I mean, even the town of Abingdon, uh, if I'm not mistaken, those firefighters are volunteer firefighters. So, I mean, it's not a requirement, if that was the case, then every town or municipality would have to have that. But, uh, I'll be more than happy to look into it and get you a written answer.
Realistically, sovereign immunity is a separate issue, that was a different issue-
It is, but I was just looking, when, it just came up when I was reading that case, so.
If we're not mandated to it, you know, it maybe they, we can narrow it down to where they respond, four or five hundred calls as backup or something like that, or what we may be required to do, that's my perspective on it, saves a lot of money, there's big trucks rolling. And, uh, I just appreciate a response on that as soon as possible, Mr. Eads. Oh, Miss, Miss Marney says she can tell us.
Well, I can't talk to Marney.
Well, pass it on to Bill Hartley, call him tonight and tell him the secret.
No, no.
No, we don't want to start, yeah.
No, not tonight, okay?
I can answer all your questions, but I, I'm not saying-
Okay. No?
I'm not, I'm not offering you any-
Okay.
I can answer your questions, but I will not do it without your, without your asking me to do it, that's it.
Calm, calm-
Get us tomorrow night.
I, I ask you, by the way, I mean, that's just, I, I, there's a request, if you can, I know you're-
Um, do you care if I ask a couple of questions of-
No, certainly, please, please.
I think it's important, if, um, Mr. Cox, in regards to, uh, the Life Saving Crew's finances, uh, you stated you're not in the business of making money. Does the Life Saving Crew have a profit at the end of the year?
Actually, no, uh, when we have over profit or over budget, uh, it usually involves us taking money from capital, uh, to put into there to, uh, it, we may run short, like if, uh, we had a very large expense or something. We'd have to, uh, pull money out of there.
When you say get money from capital, and I'm trying to do this so council can be educated on if they would decide to do this with the fire department, when you say you get money with capital, so you have a capital reserve set aside?
For equipment, large expenses.
And where does that money come from?
Uh, we have, we never put any money from actual billing in there. Several years ago, there was, uh, uh, McClure, uh, family, uh, that passed away, a member, that gave us a large donation, and we applied it to a investment type thing to put in, uh, it's, it's an annuity based, uh, and what it is, is it's grown over the years, we've been able to buy equipment. Uh, before that, there was years when we weren't able to buy anything, and because, uh, we'd raised donations and, uh, just to try to get the best equipment we could.
So was that annuity, was that annuity placed in the name of the Bristol Life Saving Crew, or how was that set up?
With an annuity, the way it's set up is, it's placed in different people's names, but only at my death, the Bri- it would go to the Bristol Life Saving Crews.
So let, let me get this straight, you're accepting money that on your death, that you're accepting money on Bristol, Bristol Life Saving Crew, that's put in solely into your name, and then on your death goes over to-
It has to be in somebody's, it can't be, an organization can't die and give money to itself.
Mr. Eads, you can't, you can't, you can't have an annuity in the name of a business, it has to be an individual, you should know that.
I under- I understand that.
But there's no way that I could ever get that money. First of all, I'd have to die, uh, second off, the, uh-
Well, you'd go to jail if you took it, okay?
Received, it, received, it has to be the crew, whereas then put back into the investment and put in someone else's name.
I think I know where it's going with this, only a couple of years ago, there was an accusation, they, that we were doing this, uh, F B I, K B I, State Police.
State Police.
Thorough investigation, and that, and the guys that did that did that, so there's absolutely nothing wrong with what you've done. Our investors who are, I can't remember.
San, uh, raw, uh, Money Masters? Money Masters? You can check that out.
The only reason I bring it up simply because of the rumor, we had the Saltville Life Saving Crew several years ago had the issue, so, but-
One of them was in my name, and I, you know, and then once I found out, I said, I don't want my name on it because I don't want anything to do with anything like this that's gonna drag me-
It was, it was investigated.
Have to do this, and by the way-
Perfectly fine.
How can I personally, some guy said, how can I, as an investigator, can I get one of these accounts for me, my personal funds? We said, no, because they're not available anymore, they quit a couple of years ago. But this was thoroughly investigated by the State Police, the F B I, you're welcome to go back and check it out.
Is he? Does the United Way still give you money?
Yes, they, uh, gave, they cut us twenty thou- let's see, they cut us eighteen thousand two hundred dollars of this last year. So we're still receiving twenty thousand, years ago, we was making a hundred thousand.
Mr. Eads, I don't think it matters about the questions that you're asking, but I think realistically, you're getting off topic. If you've got a question, if you want to see the books and so forth, ask them to put the books to the city, but realistically-
Would you turn the books over to the city?
The, the auditor, uh, yeah, as soon as, uh, he could rela- I guess he could raise, I, I'm not, I don't know about financials.
And, and Mr. Eads, one other thing, you, you don't confuse the town of Saltville and their fires and their crew-
Mr. Flainer, I'm not confusing anyone, with all due respect.
Well, 'cause it was Medicare and Medicaid fraud.
What I'm doing is, I'm asking questions, it has to do, that the council needs to be made aware of in order to make an appropriate decision. I asked council if I could ask some questions, I got permission, and that's what I did.
There's difference between what you probed about and so forth, and then to put it out there, the town of Saltville a few years ago, and that was Medicare and Medicaid fraud, and there's been no allegation whatsoever, and then you ask, act like an annuity being put to somebody-
I never, I never accused anyone of a crime, Mr. Flainer, with all due respect, I never accused anyone with a crime.
You used, you used the analogy to what happened in the town of Saltville with this crew, sir, and I find that offensive.
Well, I'm sorry you find it offensive, but I think it's a question that needs to be answered based on allegations I've heard.
Yeah, the, the annuities are the windows. I mean, we've had by, anyway, we've had by ambulance, we've had by equipment, and that money is not any replacement. So, I mean, you're welcome to sit, come on down, we'll show you everything we have.
I'll answer any question, yeah, I, I-
Look, I think, I-
If I don't have to answer them, I'll-
Everyone in this room wants to make every, everything work for the citizens of the city of Bristol. It's that simple.
That's all we're-
And I want, and when it, and when we can come to an agreement to make it work, I want it to work smoothly. I want it to work for everybody's benefit, I want it to work for your all's benefit, I want it to work for the fire department's benefit. I, I would like to be able to see a situation where both entities, when there's a call, both desire to go, wanna go. And I think they do that now, but I wanna make sure that there's a solution so that everybody can benefit in a way that's good for everyone. No one wants to see people lose jobs, no one wants to see a life-saving crew that's been in business seventy years be completely dismantled. But at the end of the day, city of Bristol has to find ways to make money. I know there's individuals on the council that don't wanna do that, I just wanna make sure everybody's doing it, doing it right. So at the end of the day, everybody's happy, that's all I'm asking these questions for.
I'm, I'm telling you, there's no money in it, I mean, you know, all, all of our, all of our people that volunteer just do it because we want to. I mean, I don't even live here, I live in John City, I drive thirty-five miles up here, thirty-five miles back, just to work for free. That's how much I love it. I've been doing this for twenty-three years, up here.
And I think anybody that's in the E M T business, or any, any sort of emergency service business, they, they love what they do, or else they wouldn't do it. I mean, police officers make nothing, firefighters don't make anything, E M Ts don't make anything, so you have to love what you do, and-
I'd like to respond to one thing you said, as a person, as a citizen, and a member of the twenty-eight years of the Life Saving Crew, with permission of the Capitol, you know, and the President, because you're the one-
Can you come up to the microphone?
Okay. I'd like to say something as a citizen of Bristol, and a member of the Bristol Life Saving Crew-
Well, as a member of the Life Saving Crew.
Not taking away, yes, sir, I've been in it for twenty-eight years.
No, you're saying this as a member of the Life Saving Crew, as a citizen, you would have to wait to public comment.
All right, I'll do that too. Um, there's been allegations that he had referred to. Now, there's a group of people, and I'm not really sure who they are, and we don't know who they are, that have been disgruntled with us for a long time, that started this whole thing. Uh, we were told there were letters written, and that we were embezzling funds, uh, so we weren't even aware of the investigation until it was well along, and it came to us. So, I mean, this, this is, this investigation that he refers to has done in the past, and it's, what is it, two years now?
A little more than that.
More than that.
Cause it was in Tom, four, probably four.
All you gotta do is trace the money, Bob, all you gotta do is trace the money. I mean, Mr. Eads' question, all you gotta do, you got X dollars, and you show where X dollars goes to and so forth and so on, okay? And if it went in somebody's back pocket, that's a crime. If it went to the crew for an ambulance or equipment and so forth, that's okay, or to pay a salary, that's okay. And to convolute what the whole issue here is tonight is really kinda sad. And that's what we've done, we've convoluted this whole issue. And, and that's a, it's, it's not a real good tactic, okay? It's just like being extorted, somebody says, you know, we're gonna say you did this, if, you know, if you don't do this, we're gonna do this, okay? And that's how I kinda look at this, and, you know, my votes on anything is for the best interest of people and everything, but if you can show Mr. Eads, he's asked for, you know, he's, okay, just get your audits, show him the money that came in, let's just cut it off here, we don't have to get angry about it, just show him, show Mr. Eads, just show him everything from when you got these annuities, and the checks and so forth that went out, I'm, I'm assuming and guaranteeing that it's gonna be fine. But you can satisfy Mr. Eads and the rumor mills out here real quick, and we can move on real quick, okay? Fair enough?
Did you have any questions?
You had a couple. You mentioned, uh, you had thirty-two part-time employees at the crew and nineteen volunteers.
Yes.
So if you had to tell me how many full-time it would take to do all the functions that you do to keep the Life Saving Crew tasked in the city of Bristol where they are, how many full-time people would it take?
Uh, you're gonna need, uh, to run the two ambulances, if you run twelve-hour shifts, uh, like we do, we, we set up on twelve-hour shifts, it's gonna take eight people. Uh, if you run the twenty-four, it's gonna take four, uh, to be an ALS at least. Uh, all our ambulances have ALS on, uh, sometimes they're double ALS. It's, uh, for some reason, it's, uh, been a lot easier to, uh, have pa- uh, paramedics than it has E M Ts. But, uh, it, it costs us more, but it's just not, uh, it depends on these people's schedule.
So is that eight plus four plus two, fourteen, is that what you're saying, fourteen total?
Well, uh, we're talking about, uh, if you, by the shift, it's gonna, it takes us eight people per shift, okay? Now, some, sometimes the people that run during the day, well, some of them run at night, it's still eight, it's still eight positions.
So the fire department would need eight full-time people to do this function, 'cause that's what it would take.
Well, if you go to-
We did a study a couple of years ago about going full-time rather than volunteer, we need, we ended up with, you know, I mean, so we were staffed full-time. Get rid of any issues, 'cause there, you know, there was, there's rumor mill thing going around.
You need to come back up- When you speak, you need to-
We had a total of sixteen people that would be required, because you got two per ambulance, and if you're on twelve-hour shifts, if you're gonna do any kinda decent work on an ambulance, would you want somebody who's been on shift for twenty-four hours working on you in the back of the truck administering drugs? So we do it in twelve-hour work, we propose to ourselves twelve-hour shifts. So that's four, two ambulances, that's four, that's eight per shift. You got three shifts, so actually you're talking about twenty-some people. Then you're gonna have people that are off, so you gotta have somebody filling for them. So you're in the neighborhood of twenty-some people if you staff this correctly. Plus the fact, like the chief said, he's gonna take people off the amb- off the fire trucks, that leaves a two-man fire truck coming to your house to fight a fire. You got one man on the pumper, one gotta go in, so you gotta take an ambulance out of service if you're gonna run. Have to, unless you're gonna pull another fire truck from another station. So if, and with his proposal, he was gonna put an ambulance at station one, not at three. Is what he told these guys. So that would be our end uncovered with an ambulance. But anyway, three people on the truck, two on an ambulance- But anyway, three people on the truck, two on an ambulance, so they're out there fighting fire, there's any EMS call at one of your houses, there's your ambulance coming.
Did the meeting that the crew had with the fire department yesterday, or day before, did that, um, did it go well, how did it go?
He had brought forth the suggestion of a, of a one-on-one, uh, with an ambulance being put at station one, so, I want to say, sorry. Uh, we talked about this, we, we're kind of the numbers people, we have to look at crunch numbers and say, at first, we looked at, uh, them getting two ambulances, that was putting us out of business completely. That was firing thirty-three people, telling eighteen, nineteen volunteers, sorry. Uh, at one-on-one, yeah, that's, but still firing sixteen people. Uh, we looked at the numbers, and we don't think we could even survive with the one ambulance that we have. Uh, I told him we would take the presentation and to the membership, we were having a membership meeting that night, Thursday night, uh, it was voted down, uh, after we went over the numbers and said, if we have one ambulance, what can we do, and it looked, it didn't look good.
So, there wasn't anything you came up with that was a short-term help for you and a short-term help for the fire department, between the two ambulances?
Well, that was, I think, that's the only suggestion we talked about at that time. Uh, we looked, we looked at some others, uh, when he called, uh, when he texted me Saturday, Saturday night, I believe it was when I talked to you.
Friday night.
Okay, uh, Friday night, we'd looked at something, but nothing was agreed on, uh, you got, even if something is agreed, I mean, to, to try to go forward, I still have to bring this back to the membership, and then they have to bring it to the board of directors, who will meet this Thursday to be voted on, and right now, it's not looking good, I mean, according to the votes and stuff, and while I've talk, called people, that there's not a lot of people for it, I mean, we feel, to me, we feel like McDonald's, and the city or the park or whatever is asking McDonald's to shut down a privately-owned business, so they can flip the burgers and they can make the money. And, I mean, that's, this was blindside of this, you know, uh, when we started watching the videos of the meetings, and all of a sudden this came up, and then we had a meeting here Thursday, and was said, you know, try to come back Monday. It's really hard to come up with something in just a few days when you're asked to meet and try to work something out, uh, I don't know if there's another solution. Uh, I've called people, asked them, you know, come up with some answers, what do you think about this? And we've had every answer from no way, we're not doing anything, to give it to them, to one-on-one, to them buying ambulances, to us lending them ambulances. We, we've come up with ideas, but noth- but nothing's been agreed or talked about since, uh, we did the vote, uh, we just can't do one-on-one. Anybody?
I'm done.
Do you have any questions, Councilman Wingard, Hubbard?
No. I, I have one question, you, Mr. Hubbard asked if you run in Bristol, Tennessee currently, and you said only as a backup mutual aid.
Yes.
Ten years ago, when Bristol, Tennessee did this, prior to that, did you run service over there just like you do in Bristol, Virginia currently?
We were, we were the primary for Bristol, Tennessee and Bristol, Virginia.
When Bristol, Tennessee switched and decided to have their EMS take over, did they ask you about that?
No.
Okay.
We were called and told there was two ambulances hidden in C one down there behind some cardboard boxes, did we know about it? We started to investigate, and then all of a sudden, we heard, as of December thirty-first, you will no longer be primary, and we will be taking over. And we had to deal with it. I'd just like to say one other thing, all we wanna do is what we've been doing for seven years, and that's serve the people. Like I said, nobody's making any money off of this, uh, you know, we, we just believe that us as a private organization should be left alone to take care of the business that we're doing. And, you know, we didn't cause the shortfall that these firemen might lea- the fire department didn't cause the shortfall that they might lose their jobs, you know? I don't think it's their fault, I don't think it's our fault, I don't even think it's your fault, because I know all this started before any of you run there, but we just wanna be left alone and do our job, and I don't wanna walk up and tell thirty-three or sixteen people, I gotta let you go, you know, when they're doing such a good job at it.
Six of us are firefighters for the Bristol City, the Bristol, the city of Bristol.
I don't wanna lose them either.
Thank, um, okay, does anybody have any que- any more, no questions from, no question, yeah. Thank you for coming, thank you for what you do for the community.
Appreciate it.
Any more questions of Chief Armstrong? Um, okay, before we move to the next item, we'll, we'll take a recess, but do, I guess the question is, we, at some point, we need to resolve this issue, because, you know, are we gonna, is, is Councilman Wingard still leaving on the table? Do you wanna close it? Cause that is, when we get into looking at the expense side, we need to get, start making some decisions and get a handle on this revenue issue. And I, you know, we need to get a consensus of council either very soon on, on a lot of these things, so we can start moving forward. Cause we had a lot of discussion, we've heard a lot of things, I can understand wanting to think about it, but we're gonna have to start moving forward, so we can get this budget to a position where we can have a public hearing, uh, and then begin to move forward with that, so.
Mr. Mayor, let me say, um, I agree with what you're saying one hundred percent, I made my position pretty well clear, I think, and I have, and, um, you know, realistically, I, you know, there's an old saying, leave sleep, let the sleeping dogs lie. And maybe, just maybe, Thursday, I think there would have been a, a consensus among this council that we keep the situation as it is. And I thought there would be some, you know, opportunities in the next two or three days between those times for them to come back. I think we've given a full hearing here today, uh, uh, if you wanna call for a vote here, then I'm prepared to call for a vote or whatever, but, uh, I mean, I'm just saying, it's my position that this is something that really needs to be studied, revisited next year, where there's gonna be a capital outlay and so forth, and we, you know, realistically, I think it was a very good point Mr. Cox made. You know, they went, took three na- ambulances to Nashville or somewhere, and two of, only one came back, and you saw the picture of that, and you had to retro it, I mean, realistically, we don't have the money to put a capital investment. My position is, and, and we, like I said, three strikes, we should be out of ca- uh, private business, and after your four strikes, you're starting a new battery, and that's my position.
It sounds to me like all, neither life-saving crew nor our fire department would make a profit, because you basically have to put all that back into equipment that's always needed. Always some new mandate coming down, you gotta have something with eight lives instead of seven, I mean, it never ends, so to say we're gonna make money is stretching the truth, it's gonna, we're gonna have money for capital investments, which same as you guys do, but that's not really a profit. Profit's when you get to spend it on something else besides what you're doing.
It's a wash, it's a wash.
Yeah.
It's a wash.
All right, we thank you, I do.
I do, yes. Yes.
Well, I'll tell you, um, my position hasn't changed based on what I've heard tonight, it's what I said last, uh, meeting was the same, this is a big project, it's a big undertaking, I think the impact of it is bigger than anybody in this room understands. I think the details of the top line of the bottom line expenses and what it really takes to do it is not well-understood, and so I'm just telling you, I won't be voting for a budget that's got this project in there, so you wanna know the cut to the chase, I just cut to the chase for you.
That's what we need to know.
I think Mr. Hubbard did too, I think you basically said it's a wash, if it's a wash, there's no gain for six.
And with that, I do applaud these folks looking at this, I mean, that, you gotta keep looking at this kinda stuff, that doesn't mean every idea that comes forward, you know, after we get into it is, is something we think is right. So, we, we can't stop looking at opportunities, but you, but this one just, uh, this one just doesn't smell right in any respect.
Think I may, guess we're gonna- Well, I will say, uh, you know, I think, I don't think anybody's thinking you'll make a profit, I, I've always said that the right term to use is not generate revenue, but recover costs, because right now, you have firemen that are going out on these calls, and I think that's what we're trying to do, is recover some of the costs from doing that. We're not trying, uh, to necessarily put the EMS out of, out of, uh, business, and, and I think everyone appreciates what they're doing, and like to see some kinda balance. Uh, so with that said, though, you know, one of the things that it seems to me is, in, in all of this, the biggest cost is personnel, and that's the cost that we already have built into the budget. So, again, it's helping to recover some of the cost of running these things, the, the, the true, when you look at the fire department's budget, it's not running the, the big engine all the time, it's, it's paying for the salaries, that's the true cost, and if you have people that are trained to provide this service, and they're doing it already, uh, I, I think it's, you ought to look at ways to try to, to, uh, recover that cost, if at all possible, and I appreciate the chief doing that. Uh, but it seems, in, in, unless I'm very mistaken, that right now, we're not gonna consider that in, in the coming budget. So, I, I bring that up to say that that brings a shortfall of over half a million dollars by not doing that, that we're gonna have to find somewhere, uh, on, either with other revenues or on the expense side. And, you know, I, I think, um, you know, well, I, I just bring that up, cause that is, if that's where we're gonna start, so at some point, we're gonna need a, a running total, cause now the budget, you know, we started with a budget that's balanced, now it's getting outwack, so we're gonna have to have, maybe, uh, ask the city manager to, I don't know, flip chart or something, but, you know, we're gonna have to be keeping up with that as we go along. And, um, you know, like I say, I, I applaud the, the chief for, for bringing this idea, I, um, but I guess right now-
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you something, please, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'm just curious, the, the other day, we had, from the commission of revenue, that we went, um, you know, we had a one-point-seven-five deficit, and then we heard we had a two-hundred-thousand-dollar surplus. So, my, I guess my question to ask you, Mr. Mayor, and maybe our CFO, um, I know you're talking about a half million by not doing this, but would that be three, based on the numbers we got the other night, would that two-hundred thousand go against that five-hundred thousand, so we're looking at three-hundred thousand?
Well, if we can believe the number that we got, since we've had three, I don't know if we can count on it, but yeah, in theory, that would be possible.
Ms. Crowder?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to chime in here, um, statutorily, when you have a general reassessment, as we have just went through, you can only increase by one percent, anything more than one percent, we, we have to do a tax rate adjustment by Virginia law.
Okay, well, what I'm saying, though, is if we have a surplus, you know, if whether we don't, if we don't rig the tax rate, we're only talking right now a three-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit, if assuming, uh, uh-
But one percent of the tax levied in FY seventeen is approximately a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. So, what I'm saying is, anything above a hun- you could account for a hundred-and-thirty thousand at that.
Okay, so we're three-hundred-and-seventy thousand at the best, at the best.
Well, that's why I say, at some point, we're gonna need, uh, as we have these discussions, and, and, um, maybe not tonight, maybe not tomorrow night, but probably Saturday, or, or some, I mean, at some point, we're gonna need a running total to see where we're at.
Well, I thought Monday, today, was the day that we were promised a certified revenue number.
Yeah, what about that?
I would love, I, well, let me answer that, and then you can chime in, I had, he's not here, is he? Um, I have not, I have not received a certified number, I did receive some numbers from his assistant on Friday, but I don't consider that, he was not part of those numbers, so I do not have a certified number.
Ms. Crowder, did you hear what we, did you hear, you were here, but, even sick as you were, you were here Thursday, and he did say he would be here tonight, did he not?
Or just get us a certified total today?
I will check with him first thing in the morning, um, but I do know that, uh, he, they did send numbers Friday, but again, it wasn't him and a certification, so I'm not sure where they stand in terms of the final number.
Well, as of Friday, are we around two-hundred K?
As of, the number that ca- came Friday changed very slightly, it was only eight thousand dollars lower than what he had presented.
So, two-hundred thousand, cause I think he presented two oh eight.
Yeah, it's like one ninety-two or something, like that, uh, but I know Ms. Braylon was gonna add something.
I think my microphone's on, we can give an update tomorrow night, um-
On the total, running total?
The running total.
Certified total.
We gonna use a hundred and thirty?
No, the, the running total of the budget.
I don't know that we'll have a certified total tomorrow, but we can give the best information that we have, and where we are, um, as, as far as the budget deficit.
And we can, and we'll incorporate a hundred-and-thirty thousand in that.
You're right, Mr. Mayor, please.
Yeah, so, okay, anything else on that item? I would, uh, think we'll take a brief recess, come back for item number two. Move to the second item on the agenda, which is Parks and Recreation discussion, and, um, who would-
I have a presentation planned, because you all asked for Parks and Rec to come back, so Danny Hill, Sears, Wells, Michael Main on the operations side, if you have questions, they'd be happy to answer them. You know, the gate was the proposal, and we heard on Thursday, you all don't wanna do that this year, and that's fine, um, but the comment was made to have them available.
Do we, do we for sure not want to do that this year, y'all, or that will be decided for sure?
I didn't.
I, I didn't know that that was-
It doesn't necessarily have to be done July one, but I think it probably should be implemented sometime during the year.
Yes, I, I agree, I thought we were gonna look at maybe some schematics and so forth, and, and see exactly how, I, that's what I thought we were going to do.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, well, just continue planning for it, make sure you find the, an ideal location for it, looks like where you have it is your only option right now, but maybe if we pave some other area, would it help?
May I interject one thing on that, I, I-
Turn your mic on, turn your mic on, you got a good voice, but you can't-
It is on, I think, I just got up close.
Now it's on.
I was walking the park the other day, I'll try to do that on occasion, quite frequently, just to see the people walking through the park, and one of them saw my recognition of who, you know, I worked for the city and who I was, and they asked me, said, uh, well, I heard that they're gonna raise the, or put a charge to get in here. And I said, well, you know, probably so, I said, you can read where we're at, and I said, we're not the only ones doing it, I said, the other side of town charges for their park, and at this point, our emissions would be lower than theirs. Um, but this lady said, after a while, she said, you know, she said, we need something to keep the park up, and if that's the way we can get funds, she was very positive on that, so, I, that made me feel pretty good about the situation. I, the logistics is gonna be the biggest thing.
Right, that's why you need to spend a lot of time thinking about what, how can they possibly screw it up, because no matter what plan you get, the public gets involved, they do something that you say, why would anybody do that? And that's, it's like a computer programmer, he thinks any fool would do it this way, and you hand it over to the public, and they touch one key, and the thing dies, so, I don't think you gotta shoot for July one, is what, what we wanna keep doing.
Well, but I would say, Mr. Hubbard, if the projections that are in the budget are based, the question is to know when those projections are based on, if they're based on one full year, then we need to figure out, is this gonna be by the end of summer, so we can take three-quarters of that projection? Is it gonna be, we're gonna start at the beginning of the calendar year, uh, so we can take half of that projection, I mean, that's what, it's kinda like the same thing, if, if we had moved forward with the fire and the EMS, if, if it was one, they proposed two ambulances, if it's one, we need to, we need to start moving from the general discussion, which is good, but we need to start getting down to very specific details and numbers, especially, so that we can see how that's gonna balance out. And I guess that's the thing, the other day, we had the general discussion, now, uh, I, I, you know, there were a few questions asked, I, I don't know that you'd be able to answer all those in, in just over a weekend, but, uh, the bigger question is, you know, in my mind, is if that was based on, you know, getting everything ready and starting July one, if we're gonna push it back three months, six months, then we need to revise those revenue figures accordingly. And so that's gonna, again, have an impact on, on the, the revenue side that we're gonna have to account for on the expense side.
Good point, very good point, in other words, we can't, we gotta get it coming in, or there's no use having it in the budget, basically, it's a shortfall.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Can I ask this question then, in relation to what Mr., our mayor, Mr. Hartley, just said, um- How long would it take to implement this? Best guess, if we said, you know, we, we want to do this and so forth to actually get it in operation?
I believe Michael might be better to answer that. He's been the one doing the homework on that.
I don't know, I don't know what the lead time is on the gate. Logistically, I looked at, at the situation, the stack situation we've got there. We would have to, for one option would be to change the drive entrance to the, the larger parking lot at the top, move the gate forward in advance or beyond the driveway to the advocacy center. Take that out of the equation and just use that lower parking lot as a return loop, as an exit ramp, possibly redesign that road down there. A lot more work, but all that can be done in-house. We're already paying the people, you know. We can do all this. We would have to widen the area where the, uh, uh, gate and the guard shack or ranger station is at the top. And just allow people to go in the larger parking lot and then exit out the bottom when the.
August 1st this year, if we go, you say go?
Three months at tops, if we get started, I would think.
Be good to have it by the fall of the year when the leads are turned and stuff like that. I'm sure that'd be a draw.
If it, if, I think the, if it's feasible that we do this, it's also feasible that we use some monies this year to buy materials that we, that, that we can plan. If we're planning on doing it, we may even have enough money to buy most of the materials this year. That's what I'm thinking.
Thank you, sir.
I might say if we did get it in by the fall, that would be good because our youth football league begins and that parking lot is packed full from September on. So that would, would be good.
So you feel you can have it done by August 1, you say?
Starting, starting now, I'm sure we could.
Starting July 1 and then?
Starting July 1, not so sure, yeah.
Right.
September.
Was, were the projections based on starting?
I think the projections were, were an annual, it was an annual projection.
Looks like they added about $10,000 over what we were already collecting for the camping areas.
Pardon?
Yeah. I'm just looking at the Sugar Hollow Waldo Miles fees. It's going from 34.6 to 45 as an estimate for this.
I think it's at 40,000.
No, it was 40.
We had, I think, a little bit more projected for the.
Yes, 45, I got the latest.
Yeah, it was, it was 40,000. There was a new line for Sugar Hollow parking fees, but then it had expenses of 10,000. So it was a $30,000 net increase.
Okay. So I guess we better than shoot for August 1. Or as soon as possible, obviously, August 1 would be the latest.
Or we cut it in half and you start it in the spring.
Yeah. Well, I guess if we run into some insurmountable holdup for some reason and.
Well, I think in a lot of ways, that might be better. Because that would give plenty of time to get it in place as well as give people plenty of, you know, the, the new year is a good breaking point. I mean, August 1 is kind of a weird time, maybe say Labor Day or some, you know, have some kind of breaking point that in people's minds. But I think the calendar year might work better, although that then.
I would start off with the no revenue period of the year, basically.
Yeah, and well.
Want to miss all the sports events.
The fall sport, that's the problem.
Yeah, we can't afford to do that because the next sport event season comes around is the next year after the one we're talking about now.
It would be certainly easier to, to shoot for that. Staff wise, we're spread pretty thin right now. We took, we lost three members of our part-time staff at Parks and Rec last year and took a hit this year as well. So we're running, running slim.
So what are you asking for?
I'm saying that springtime would be a better.
To do it in the beginning of the calendar?
During the winter, we were having, during the winter is our downtime and we'd have more opportunity to do the work without compromising anything.
Basically, we're only going to look for three months of revenue. For spring of 18.
Done this year, I would assume.
This year.
Well, in the current year, no, but I meant, the year we're talking about here, 17, 18, you're talking spring of 18. And then we have three months before we start the new calendar 18, 19 year. So in other words, count on three months of revenue if you go set it up in the winter.
I would think you're right, yeah.
So, so instead of showing revenues of 40,000, would show revenues of 10?
Well, I, I mean, I'm going to let Mr. Hill correct me if I'm wrong, but certainly attendance at the park is not proportional monthly. It's heavier in the fall and the spring. So I do not think you would take a fourth of it. I think you would be closer to taking a half of it if you had it in before the spring events occurred. Because we felt like we were conservatively low on that estimate to start with.
And there are a lot of cross-country events that come up in the fall of the year. That brings in a lot of people, especially one or two events we have up there that would bring in a lot of revenue off of those parks.
Which that's good and bad. If you got a new system and you have that glut of people coming in all at once, it makes it tough on you figuring out, what am I doing? I got 10 people waiting for me to handle this one. It's, it's a good problem to have naturally, but maybe we better just count on 40% of the revenue projection and have it ready for sure by next spring.
And I would just say that, again, I'll defer to you, Mr. Hill, but generally with those kinds of events, people don't all come at the same time. Because you have different races ran at different times with different ages. And so you do get spread out to some degree.
Right. When you have the doggy thing, you need to put a doggy treat vending machine in there for dogs. I'm serious. I mean, we're all going to get some money there. Seriously. I mean, I mean, it sounds kind of funny, but people love their animals. I mean, you know, I'd rather gift them my dog than anybody, I think.
I agree with that. However, if I'm not mistaken, the way the grant reads, we've locked ourselves out of charging for to get in. Well, I don't know about that. It depends. I guess where you'd sell them at.
That's what I'm talking about, a little vending thing for doggy treats, like 50 cents a dollar.
I will say, because I think you're going to find this amusing, and we need some amusement tonight.
Yes, we do.
Mr. Hill was recently telling me that they actually had a request and we rented the dog park out because somebody rented it for a birthday party for their dog. And so we will happily rent the dog park out for a fee.
Really? For anybody can just, no, man.
They take their dogs serious.
Hey, you know, you think I'm mean here at times? Do something to my dog.
So.
So the, the plan is to go ahead and do it, but try and do it in the winter, build it up? Or are we going to try to hit the fall? What do you guys think you can do?
Well, you say go ahead and do it. We'll see what we can do. It's, it's ready when it's ready.
I guess that'd be the best bet. We'll, we'll count on it not being ready, but if you can get it ready before, good for you. Understand what he's talking about and need to keep his guys busy on the off-season. I mean, that, there's merit to that.
Believe me, we don't have any trouble keeping busy.
On the off-season?
Any, there is no off-season. Not, well, in the street department, there's no off-season. Parks and Rec, there, there are idle times, yes. I, I, I expect we use some members of the street department to, to help build this as well.
But traditionally, we use Parks and Rec staff as building maintenance staff in the winter. They do a lot of improvements. As you know, they did a lot of that work in social services along with public works. They did the work here at City Hall. And so that's in the downtime, so we do building maintenance projects.
And we've got a dog park to build too.
From a grant, from a grant.
Okay. So that's another 20,000.
Yeah, it's another 20 we went backwards.
Okay. Well, at least we're getting somewhere. It is not in the right direction yet.
Just looking at this, the increase in camping fees?
Yes.
What, is that just general increase in usage or is that a change in the fee structure?
No. Upon when we did our comprehensive study back in November, I think several council members here suggested looking at raising the fees and also raising them even more during special events. And we have put that in place. You have to remember the camping season doesn't run with the physical year of the city. It starts in January and goes. So once we started the camping season this year, we went ahead and raised the rates from $18 to $20. And we've not had anybody, you know, really throw any bad press back to us on that. And we raised it from $20 to $27 for the Rhythm and Roots. And Rhythm and Roots is where the camping is totally filled out each year. It's always basically filled up. So that should, now keep in mind though, in being on, in, in upfront with you, many of those Rhythm and Root people, when they left last September, went ahead and paid for this coming September. And at that point, there was not that increase. But the ones that are left that have not paid, they will have that $27 in.
Well, that's a good carrot to tell the people, you know, if you want to avoid any increases, buy it now.
I, I would also add that, you know, they have overflow camping areas during Rhythm and Roots. So we're looking at ways to maximize those areas to bring in more campers.
And we're having more campers coming in. It's every day we're getting calls where we're, when we had the energy system come into the city, it allowed the campground to become a green quote campground. And then SoDoo in Tennessee Valley came in and we were able to get some recognition and free advertising nationwide. And we're now considered an ARVIC campground, which gives us nationwide advertisement. And you're beginning to see some of the effects. Every day we're getting calls from people on the road calling in, saying, we're going to be there tomorrow. We're up in New York now. And so that's helping us out also.
Yeah, that's good. Plus, if you get a gate out at the entrance, you can maybe put camping where you ordinarily wouldn't do it because you couldn't control it before. I don't, I don't know how much acreage we're not using out in the back, but in other words, you don't have to set up another gate. Right now, you've got one camping area that's gated. But if you wanted to go basically across the entrance there and try to expand in that unused territory.
Think I follow what you're saying. If you move it out closer, then you've got more ability.
Yeah, you don't have to worry so much about a certain area. You can spread it around.
Right.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I said a couple of things. Were you at the last meeting? We talked about the Sugar Hollow?
No, I had a, where I'm doing two jobs basically with one title. I was not, not able to be here for that one.
So as far, as far as the charging for the parking fees you come in, I mean, the two concerns I had, one, do we know the traffic count well enough to know we're not going to have a congestion issue when all these major events occur? And you got people trying to get in, pay in and backing up because the airport has a really issue and there's a lot of people hits those gates.
Well, I think that's where we're looking, maybe at moving it on up, further up the hill.
And that's one solution. I'm not saying that's the only, but that's one consideration.
Let me say this, during heavy traffic events, Bristol, Tennessee has to man their gate and they, they can't use that automated gate during that. I mean, they have to actually have somebody there to charge.
The concern was there's a lot of other, you know, high school sporting events that don't charge the park, you know. And now all of a sudden, the ones that are played up there, you'd be charging them to park. Will that, will that create an issue with, you know, those parents that have kids that just play on those fields back there?
We, we've been talking in our meetings and we know that's one of the logistical things we've got to look at. You can't charge the teams coming in there. I wouldn't think that would be unfair to them. Or could you charge the softball team members that's already paid for 100 and some dollars to play in the league to come up there and park every night? But you could certainly charge the spectators that are coming in to watch that. And same thing with our youth sports. I don't think you could charge the team players to come in there, but you could the spectators. So that's where you're probably going to have to have a person there when those events to sort of, you know, figure that out.
Just make sure you think through that because you know what I'm talking about. You know, the football games, the baseball games.
Absolutely.
They just come and park and then they pay at the gate when they go in. So what's, what's the cost to maintain the entire Sugar Hollow park? Do we know between the mowing and the, you know, everything it takes to maintain that entire park? Because it's kind of embedded in all these numbers. It's hard to get that out of the finances.
Well, it's hard to get it out. That's exactly right. The, the biggest, our biggest number is out of salaries and wages, of course. Half of that is used to maintain Sugar Hollow, I would think. Half of that salary.
So half of the.
Is that fair? No.
You have how many employees?
Is that from the, is that operations, Parks and Rec operations, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, what did you say, Mayor?
That would be half of the line item for Parks and Rec operations. Is what you're trying to say?
Charm 967 on page 26.
Was the question how much it costs to maintain the park?
Yes.
We can give you that answer because there's some charges that are in programming, such as the Rangers, and then there's some that are in operations. So we'd have to, we can give you that number later.
I think one of the points that needs to be made in, in much is the concept behind what the fire chief was trying to do is again, I, I wouldn't say you're out trying to generate revenue, but you're trying to recover cost. I mean, is, is, you know, we already have these costs of maintaining the park. And so we're trying to recover some of those from the people that actually use the service. You know, the park is a very good thing because it's very easy to identify the people that use that service as they come and go. And not all of those people are necessarily residents of the city and pay taxes. Or at least real estate or personal property taxes. So, you know, that way you're, you're taking some of the cost and shifting it directly to the people that use it and benefit the most. So I think that, that's again, part of what we're trying to do here. And it covers the costs that usually, as you point out, are embedded in other places in the budget. But by no means will it break even. I mean, it's just to help recover a portion of those costs.
I think it's very well taken. I think it's sort of what the lady that was in the park that day was trying to tell me. She said, if, if charging this will help give us some money to keep the park up, then I'm all for it. So.
And that was the reason for my question. It's like if they're, if it costs you $75,000 to completely maintain the park per year and you got, well, I'm just, I just go down as an example. So if it costs you $75,000 or let's call it 100,000, it costs you 100 grand to maintain it, then if you only got 30,000 people foot traffic moving through there, you're, you're going to have to charge probably $3, right? To, to cover the cost. So that's why, is the dollar right or is the $2 right? You know, what's your right number? What comes back to what it costs you to really operate that park? And then add up your campers and your parking foot traffic and see what it takes to have it break even.
So, I mean, we can certainly get to that number because when you look at the number of Rangers at work, the number of operations crew, because it's mowed and maintained, there's Waldo Miles in the back, there's the pool, there's the shelters.
Life cards.
The lifeguard. So there's a lot that goes into it. You know, our thought was right, wrong and different to start at a dollar. And because we figured there was going to be some pushback on it and did not necessarily recover all the costs, but trying to recover some of the costs. And so that was why we made the proposal that we did.
All right. I do have one question here on page 26 on the budget here, the line item for contract labor. It's at $130,000. What are we doing here that's costing us $130,000 to contract stuff out?
Is this, are you under programming or operations?
Yeah, recreation program.
Yeah, programming.
Okay. The contract labor covers, the bulk of it would be the park rangers. You've got them coming up there. Right now, they're there at nine o'clock in the morning and they switch shifts at three in the afternoon. And then the next one comes in and works to nine that night. That's during the full park season. So you're saying, starting from early April and running through the end of October. They generally get paid $10 an hour, but then you've got to add what at work adds on top of that, which is basically about $2.30 more. So you're talking around about $12.30 per hour each of those Rangers gets paid or it's costing the city.
So, we're contracting at work employees?
Yes.
To be up there?
Yes.
Are they, are they certified Rangers?
No, sir. They are just people that takes the money and get, turns in the money to us. They're the ones that help the campers out and, but they are not what you say, security.
Okay, so if we set this gate up, we could potentially save a lot of money on this hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yes, and...
Because we can set this gate up, if it's programmed the way y'all talked about last, the last time we met, that you could put a credit card in it. If they're camping, then we could have all the rates there listed and they could just put that on their credit card and go on back in and they're...
Are you, are you saying if it's automated that we could do with less Rangers? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, less hours.
Less hours.
The big events, you still, like you said, have to have it manned.
Well, the problem you have at this point is when you have Rangers up there, if they need assistance, they need somebody to help them. And that's one thing that's helped in our park. Plus, you've got people that like to walk dogs that when they get out of sight, they'll unleash them. So, unless you have a Ranger presence that can, when I say security, they're not bonded or anything of that nature. But they do enforce the policies of the park. So, that's the important thing they do. Plus, they change, look at the bathrooms and that kind of thing and, you know, help in operations of keeping things clean and, and the park end on that. And then when we have the big events, like I say, they will be down there help, helping at the field, keep things going smoothly. When we have the big cross-country events, we'll actually park cars up in the field across from our administration office there in the big field. So, we have to have somebody helping park cars there. So, so they really are needed.
Yeah, I'm sure campers, they probably have some kind of weird question at all times and we need somebody to answer.
I guess Councilman Wingard, what I'm trying to say on there, in Parks and Rec, we only have three people in administrative office year round. Myself, a, a, a office manager and a recreation supervisor. And that's all we have is representing up there at Sugar Hollow as far as the administration end of it. And it's all we get done, answering calls and getting camping questions, taking picnic reservations. And for us to be able to get in the car and go back to assist a camper, we certainly would if we could. But we can only be so many places. But it is Rangers, also umpires for the full season of softball, basketball, football, those sports. That's under contract labor. Other things included are the lifeguards, as mentioned, that man the pool and you have, you're now certified to have to have two lifeguards at the pool. One that's certified and one to be there with them. So, each time we rent the pool, we have to have two lifeguards up there also. That's where a lot of that money comes from and it adds up fairly quickly. Plus, we have minor expenses at the senior center that will, contract labor will come out of from time to time. But the bulk of it would be your park rangers.
We still need it.
Yes, I feel they are. We did, you might notice that we did cut back on that this year from what it was last year, the amount of money there.
Any, any more questions for Parks and Rec?
Yeah, I had a couple. You had, you got contract labor above that as well under the Parks Rec and Culture, Parks and Rec operations. There's like a hundred and eighteen for this year and then sixty. So, is that the same contract labor below?
No, that's, we use contract labor to help mow.
Okay, so that's mowing.
It's seasonal employee.
You bid that?
We bid that work contract. Yes, they're the current ones that have it. But I think trees can probably, when's the last time we put that out for bid, for our people?
So, did you, you don't bid it every year for the, for the yard people?
We did, we did outbid over two-year contract and then the option to renew one year that are active for about two, I think, uh, two more years.
What does that entail, by the way, when you're saying this? Is it just cutting the grass?
No, it's a, this is citywide, part-time labor. So, it, it could be in a variety of offices. It's not just Parks and Rec cutting grass. It is in the instance for the line that was asked. But I know Treacher's here. She, she makes use of their labor sometimes. So, it could be office people or it could be outside laborers.
Okay, got to mow the grass in your office.
Is at work being used, is that where you contract with at work or is this a separate individual for at work? I don't like the idea of paying, as many people are neat jobs out here, I don't like the thought of giving them a couple of points above ten dollars an hour. You know, realistically, a couple of dollars over when we've got young people that could probably do these Ranger jobs and so forth and would love to have a summer job and so forth and so on, we can employ them. So, I have a problem, not necessar, I mean, it doesn't sound like it's a, if I were putting that in a social security work file and I had to describe that work, I would say unskilled, sedentary or light maybe. You know, it's not something that is a real skilled job and so forth. But is there some way we can go away from at work? Are we under contract at work also?
I'll answer, from my experience, from being here the years that I have, which is quite a few years, we used to have part-time city employees and went that route. And then they went to the outside agencies because of city that was, we were told was actually saving money because then they weren't responsible for the workman comp and all those type of things that wouldn't come up.
That makes sense. That's good.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's cheaper.
Yeah, I see that.
Contracted out.
I noticed a couple kind of large increases from the sixteen seventeen budget year to, to this new budget proposal. One is maintenance of building and properties was zero and that's ten grand. One was utilities, which was a hundred and five thousand. That's going up to one twenty-five. So, that's twenty-nine thousand.
Can you tell us, are you, just give us?
Page twenty-six, down there at the bottom.
Okay, so in front range.
Bottom four lines.
The ten grand is an expense with the gate.
So, that was the gate for the, uh...
That was the forty thousand revenue minus the ten thousand expenses.
Okay. And then how about the utilities going up?
Utilities. I'm gonna, so, let's see. They're just based on actual.
Probably overshot current budget year. Yeah, the year prior was one twenty-four.
Fifteen was one twenty-four and then it went down to one oh five. Now, it's back up to one twenty-five. So, that means we missed it.
Is that fuel cost adjustment?
We didn't, we didn't save as much as we thought we would.
Right, we were. The outfit to replace all the windows and everything. Some of those magnificent plans.
When you gave the presentation back several months ago, you know, with all the Parks and Rec programming, the thing that stuck out to me is there were so many additional programs we've got that we didn't used to have years ago. And that's gotta draw a lot of costs. I mean, used to, it was just, there was a few key programs that were funded, you know, like the kids' basketball teams and the football and that kind of stuff. And now it just seemed like there were, there was just a laundry list of things. And so, have you looked at all those and said, you know, are, are these really, really being asked for? And, and, you know, they, they're really needed or is there something on that list that, you know, we're spending twice the money just to have the event? We're not, you know, getting many people to show up or there's not much interest or whatever?
Most of those programs or a lot of them, like the special events and different things like that are pretty much at a no cost to us other than just our employees putting those programs on. I would go back and say our biggest cost in those programs are the youth sports. Like I said, you know, the officials and all that you need, trying to recover some of that cost. Do you have any specific program, councilman, umpire in mind that stuck out?
There were so many of them. I didn't write down all the ones. I could go back and do that. I just noticed there was a, a lot of them and I, you know, we didn't used to have all those. That's why I was asking. There were so many.
Well, I'd like to pride myself in saying we're doing good in our department by adding all those programs. But I, like I say, the youth sports and those programs, the softball where you are using umpires are probably your most costly programs on the programming end that I can see there. In the senior center, we recover some of those costs in, in things we do, like District Three governmental cooperative pays us a stipend and it comes out to somewhere between eight to nine thousand a year that we get back from them by allowing them to come in and serve meals on a once-a-week basis in our senior center. And then on some of the trips that she does, especially the larger trips, we get a significant turnaround back on some of that cost. So, while we have a lot of programs, you know, a lot of them are smaller, like programs. They may all be listed in the same place, but they, they don't really, aren't that expensive to run.
And is the investment charge at the top of page twenty-seven, is that investment for all the utility infrastructure, for all the lights and stuff and all the parks?
For the park, for the park athletic lighting, yes.
Yes.
Is all that in good shape? Any unknown expenses coming up for that?
It's in good shape to our needs. I think you all received a letter from Bristol Baseball. They would like some upgrades done eventually on some of those to meet their needs. But if you talk to the, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you talk to the high school, it, it meets their needs.
And this is all lighting? What knows this consists of?
It's investment charges for supporting all the infrastructure of all the lights and all the transformers and everything goes into having all the lights at all the fields. Sugar Hollow, the high school baseball field, all that.
Yeah.
Then league field, tall?
Score boards, little leagues.
Tennis courts.
Yeah, little league parks have the big ones too.
Well, I have a question on communications. Explain what know your communications exist, consist of?
They're about eleven thousand dollars.
Eleven thousand dollars, communication.
Page twenty-seven.
That would be, to best of my knowledge, to answer that, that would be our phone systems. That would be our cellphone systems. I guess the internet systems that, you know, we use.
And how many employees are in this department?
We have four at, excuse me, let me back up. There's three at the administrative office. And we have cut down the phones there to just three phones. We, we used to have more than that. Actually, four phones there. And also the communications would be like phonage up at Waldo Miles, at the gatehouse. In those areas also, down at the softball field, you had the phone. And then communications would have covered what's at the senior center. And where they split us out, I'm not sure if that would actually cover like the vault field and the football field. Is that communications within too? Okay.
I, in general, it, in such, in general terms, communication includes cellphones, landlines and internet. If they have cable TV at the Douglas Senior Center, that would be included. We have based this on actuals. I know that the IT director's currently bidding out some of the communication work to see if we can get it cheaper. But we have budgeted what we currently have since that's what we know.
I mean, eleven thousand dollars for seven, four to seven people, whatever the case may be, three in the office and a couple out in the field. That's an astronomical number. I mean, you're talking the landline at, at the ballpark. So, I'm sure they're inside the concession stands. You know, what's BVU charging for those phones? Because a landline at your house, a monthly charge is thirty, forty bucks. I think this is a line item we really need to take a hard look at. That's a lot of money.
Yeah, there's something big in there we're not thinking of. So, yeah, we look at it.
And I think, you know, we're in a position financially where you gotta, you gotta kind of look. We're looking at two years here, but even go back to maybe the fourteen, fifteen fiscal year. And if you just look at fifteen, what, what's shown here, you know, revenues for your charges for Parks and Rec have gone up. So, that's a good thing. Even if you take the forty K out or thirty of that or half that, you're, you're still on an upward trend on bringing revenues in to support your, you know, activities, right? But then you flip over to page twenty-six and you start to look at expenses and it's not the same picture. You know, you need to say, well, why is it that we only spent nine hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in year two thousand and fifteen? And then we went up to one oh twenty-eight of over a million. Now, we're back to nine forty-seven. Why can't that be nine thirty-five or nine twenty? You know, why can't we improve from where we were in two thousand and fifteen? Because if you can, and that's the name of the game, if you can drive, you know, that down and drive that revenue up, then you keep getting in a better position. So, I would just challenge you to go back and look at these. And because when you look at, there's several things pop up of big jumps from back in year two thousand and fifteen to date. And you say, why is that? Why did, why did this item, repair parts as an example, go from nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars to twenty-six thousand? I mean, that's a huge increase. Maybe it's warranted, maybe not. But look at the big ones and see if, if something comes up that you can save some money.
And another question too is the lease of equipment. What happened because in twenty fifteen, sixteen, that year, that budget, it was twelve hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Then the sixteen seventeen budget, it went to ninety-two hundred dollars. What was, what are we leasing and renting that drove that up?
We rent things at times when we need them on the programming side. Like a couple of years ago, we had two major trees that a councilman thought needed to be removed on our property, the administrative property. And so, our operations people said, "That's too big for us to handle." So...
Who did that?
Sir?
Who's the councilman?
Uh...
Do you know this guy?
What would you say?
I think that Councilman Steele brought it to our attention that the trees were a hazard. And had they not been a hazard, we would not have taken them back.
He questioned, do we need them removed? And they were split. But the operations people could not do that because it was beyond their control. We had to bring in tree removal service to take those two trees down. Do what, sir?
Did you call BVU there in the tree cutting down business?
I believe they were called. I can't confirm that a hundred percent, but I believe they might have been.
My individual councilman regardless, I don't think need to dictate anyone. You know, we've got, okay, we got this little scenario last year when I got him here, but we can't do anything directly. And that sounds like somebody went after all the things he done, get us involved in miles, to go say cut down trees and so forth and so on. That makes me sick. That makes me tear.
Okay. Even with that, your proposal is for a seventy-nine hundred dollar line item for this coming fiscal year for the seventeen eighteen budget. So, I'm asking why we went from twelve eighty-eight two years ago to seventy-nine hundred? We just found out why we went to ninety-two hundred. But why are we still up at seven thousand dollars, almost eight?
Which page are you on?
Uh, twenty-seven, but...
Line item, it's all from the top.
Or line.
Right under communications.
Yep, yep, yep. Has that been the V?
I mean, that's a huge increase over...
I mean, that's a huge increase over two years span.
We'll pull, we'll pull the detail on it.
There's piece equipment in there, obviously.
I, it could very well be the van.
Could have been the senior center van that we leased.
I do think, uh, we'll pull, we'll pull that. I think they have a van at the senior center that that's where that lease payment paid out.
I think that's where that came from, the lease of the van for the senior center. We had to replace a van.
Okay, I wouldn't get that answer.
Uh, any?
No, no.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. M.
All right, item number three, Clear Creek Golf Course Discussion. Mr. Barnes? All right.
You want me to start?
Yeah, well, did you have any, any presentation or anything? I mean, I.
No, I was just gonna let you know, the past two years, we've, uh, we've cut expenses by a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And, uh, this past year, uh, thirty-nine thousand. And we're presenting tonight with a balanced budget.
Well, let me tell you what, Mr. Barnes, what I look at, and you heard me, you were here today, and you know, I've known you a long time, known your father a long time, and I don't have anything personal. This is not personal. But the city of Bristol, Virginia, going back to Paul Spangler and that crew that was on council then, got us involved in the golf course. We can go back and look at all the council people. I will tell you what I'm looking at, being straight up in the square. I don't know how it's gonna happen or what's gonna happen, but I'm looking at shutting the golf course down. My perspective is to shut the golf course down from December fifteenth till somewhere around March fifteenth, maybe April first. And we're gonna have, I'm gonna have an historical data of all the weather circumstances in the city of Bristol, Virginia for the last ten years. You know, and the point of the fact is, I used to play golf. You run a good place. I'm not disputing that. But let me tell you this, when people go out and they hit a golf ball into a green and the ball goes seventy-five yards past, cause it's like concrete and so forth, then I will share this with you, that is not golfing weather. And, uh, the only thing a, a, a maintenance person can do with a green like that is to take a hot blow dryer out and blow dry it. That would be the best thing you could do to get a golf course ready. So I'm going to be lobbying, I will tell you, there's nothing that, it's set in stone. My position is, I wanna shut it down. I think the employees there can get unemployment. There won't be a position full-time in the city, and that's gonna be my position. You'll have to get on unemployment. And you will be paid as opposed to a, whoever works there, instead of a twelve-month program, you will be paid pro rata. Where you can do it, you can decide you're gonna be paid for eight months or eight and a half months, whatever it could be, nine months. Or you can pay it nine months as it is and go for unemployment. That's gonna be what I'm gonna argue for. We've gotten to that point in this city. And realistically, there's nothing that can convince me in my mind that you all need to be sitting there in, um, January and February in Bristol, Virginia, in this area, sir. And I know it's not something that makes anybody happy. I'm sorry to say it, but that's where I see it going. And, uh, that's what I'm gonna fight for. And I just wanted to tell you that man to man, okay?
With all due respect, Mr. Fleaner, January and February, we did bring in over fifty thousand dollars in revenue.
That's a bear.
That also includes, our winter time is when we plan our tournaments and events and prepare for the, for the upcoming season as well.
You've said that before, and we can get Atwork, somebody to come down here and from Atwork, a lot cheaper, and they can figure out how to work a calendar and so forth and so on. And put in the calendars and so forth and so on, um, and, and everything. That's not something that we pay fifty, sixty thousand dollars with full benefits for. I mean, okay, I'm just telling you, um.
I wish it was that easy.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, well, I'm, I'm just telling you what my perspective is and, uh.
Well, my perspective is this, I think, uh, I told you a couple of years ago, or whenever it was, it's, you know, when you have any entity like the golf course in a city that's a revenue generator, you have got to at least break even. You cannot be subsidizing out of the general fund, you know, anything like the golf course. And so I applaud you. You've done a pretty good job here to take you from a hundred and sixty thousand dollar the other way to a, pretty much a break even. So now the question is, can you take it beyond that and can you really turn it into a, a revenue generating, you know, profit center to really enhance the golf course? Cause I'm not quite where he is yet. Because I do know that the people live around that golf course. They like that golf course. They bought those homes because of that golf course. There's people that live up there that do like to play in November and December. So, um, you know, you gotta be careful disturbing that because they, they cherish that. But you've got, you have got to manage that golf course like you would a for-profit golf course. It's gotta, it's gotta stand on its own two feet. So at least you've got it standing up right now.
And Mr. Moonpower, uh, when I first took over, uh, I brought a surplus to the city. We were still on enterprise fund, sixty thousand dollars to the good. And then the year before, we broke even and we would have brought a surplus to the city that year, but we were instructed that we had to have a remodel of our, uh, snack bar. And also the homes up there generate close to two hundred thousand dollars a year for the city as well. And tho- those homes would not be in the city if it wasn't for that golf course.
Well, it wouldn't be in the city if, if TDA hadn't given it to the city of Bristol to sell lots and so forth and so on, uh, you know, so.
Yeah, that, that two hundred thousand would be going to the county.
Well, there are people that bought those homes and, and built those homes up there, and they'll tell you because of the golf course, because of that area, they did that because of the, that's why they bought there. So that's a true statement, cause I know they've told me directly that. So, but that still doesn't change the fact that, you know, you gotta, you gotta manage that golf course in such a way that it brings back to the general fund, you know?
I agree.
Money, right? So you, you gotta really make it an entity that it's not had, that it hasn't been over the past several years. So you bring a lot of revenue in on the green fees. You bring a lot of revenue to support it from your rental of your golf carts, right?
Yes.
Um, you gotta question whether the food service is necessary or do you RFP that out? You know, I would look at the food service directly and say, you know, what's it costing me? Do I, you know, I would RFP that out for three quotes every year just to see, you know, am I getting the very best, uh, you know, revenue for my cost situation and, and, you know? And the same thing, um, you might think of the same thing on the merchandise side, you know, cause you're, you're there to run the course, not necessarily to make food or sell the merchandise. So is there a better way of moving the merchandise that, um, uh, online sales or whatever, right? That, that you can come up with. Maybe the camping thing can, can be, um, brought into this from the standpoint of the campers need transportation over at Sugar Hollow to get around when they're in the park with campers. Maybe your, uh, golf carts can be rented out to campers, right? To use as a, you know, in the park transportation or, you know, get your fleet built up to where that could be another revenue stream for you. So my message is you, you keep working the problem, cause if you don't keep working the problem, then it, it comes up as a, as a debate on whether we need the golf course or not. So you want, you know, you want the people that use that golf course to give you the revenues to keep that golf course sustainable for the long term. And if you don't do that, or if there's any hiccups, and that's why you gotta stay ahead of the game, cause if there's any hiccups in the economy or anything, it could flip you back the other way, just like that. And then you're back to where you were two or three years ago.
Questions on this side?
Yeah, I've got some questions. All right, on page twenty-seven, you've got a, uh, contract labor charge here of twenty-seven thousand five hundred. Last year it was a hundred and thirty-eight. Can, can you tell us who you're contracting in on that?
It's the same as Parks and Rec. It's all of our hourly employees are through Atwork personnel.
So Atwork loves us.
Yes, they do.
And what do you think of that? Is that the right thing to do?
I, I couldn't answer that. I, I mean, I don't know what it costs on the, on the city's end.
What do these people do?
Well, we, we have some that mow. We have some that wash carts. There's a variety. Our cook, she's, she's Atwork employee. Every, we have four city employees and everyone else is at work. We're volunteers.
And through the peak season, how many employees combined are up there at any given time?
Well, in maintenance, we have normally around seven. Uh, at the clubhouse, we have, I've got one, two, about five or six.
Wow. All right, that's an area I can see we've really got a lot of room to work on.
And I would say that sounds like a lot to walk around. Are those maintenance people fully employed? You have seven of them fully employed all the time? Cause we're standing around smoking, joking, you know, they're not fully employed.
Yeah, that's not, that's not full-time employees. That's seasonal help.
Yeah, I understand that.
Cause we do have to have, we have to have someone washing carts at night. We also have to have someone cooking.
I understand that.
There's a lot of grass to mow up there.
You just gotta make sure that they're all fully a hundred and ten percent employed. They're all, I mean, sweating like there's no tomorrow. I mean, and if that's the true, and you're honest about it, then fine. You know, if they're part-time, four hours.
And that's some of the cuts we've made.
But if it's not, you've got too many people.
I'll be honest with y'all. I mean, I, I watch every penny. When I first came, we were paying six hundred and some dollars for trash pickup. I negotiated down to four hundred and at this time, we're down to a hundred and twenty-four dollars a month. So I'm, I'm watching every penny that we spend. And I know some of you don't like the golf course. I don't think any of y'all play golf. Um, but the golf course, it, there, there is another benefit to the golf course and to these citizens here as well.
Well, let me say this. I think you, you know, we don't like the golf course. Think about that. You're, you're a department head in this city and you're just sitting there and you're saying to us, you don't like, we know you don't like the golf course.
You made it clear, Mr. Fleaner.
You said that. And I, you know, hey, it's quick off up there. I have nothing, I made, I made it clear when I ran, I said, I would cut, shut it down for three months a year. I set it down here at a meeting, okay? I'm not ashamed of saying that. If it means you all or a police department person, or a fire department person, or someone that fixes, goes out here and works every day in a row, that's what I'd rather do.
My father was a, was a policeman for thirty years.
Well, I'm just saying.
They, they earn every penny they get.
And, and when it comes down to it, how many public golf courses do you really know anymore? I mean, how many are there?
Well, Kingsport has one, Johnson City has one, Elizabethan has one. That's just in the tri-city area. Marion has one.
And they bought Holson Hills, yeah. Well, it's not as much as we don't like the golf course. We're just ready for a swing.
I understand and that.
To the positive. And we've gotta figure out how to get all of these departments pulled in to where the cost of doing business is not so astronomical. And I appreciate you, you know, negotiating the trash removal and all that, because that's what a manager and a leader does, is negotiate and, and try to keep the cost under control. And so let's move on to communications. Again, I mean, that was, that is a line item that just blows me away when I go through here because I have not added it all up, but this city is spending close to knocking at the door of at least a million dollars a year in communications. If it's not, it's at least three quarters of a million. We are going broke talking to each other. Well, I agree.
Save some money here.
I agree.
So on the communication side on y'all, does, does all four of y'all have cellphones?
No, sir. I, I have a cellphone that the city pays for my service. I pay for the phone myself. And it, it works sometimes and sometimes it doesn't.
Okay.
So.
You have the same thing, right? It's cellphones, it's landlines, it's internet, um, I, do you have cable?
Cable.
I don't see those bill, I mean, I, I just have the paperwork. That's what it's for, landlines, two cellphones.
So you're saying none of the four of you have a cellphone other than him?
He does.
I have, I have one and, and our superintendent Matthew has one.
Okay, so two cellphones. And then the clubhouse is gonna have a landline, and I'm sure the clubhouse has cable, internet. Other than that, what would you have?
Internet.
Internet, okay, internet.
And that, and that little swipe thing for the credit cards is probably communication.
That should be con, that should be leased out.
That's, that's a different line.
That should be a lease. No, not if you have internet. The line, lines went away on that. It's all internet now. It's all.
If they're on that, yeah.
Yeah, we don't dial up anymore.
I would be happy to provide you with the communication breakdown for every department.
That would be nice.
We can do that. That is not a problem. Casey is, I'll say Mr. Barnes is correct. Um, these are numbers that are plugged in when they get it because the finance department gets the bills, gets the bills.
And then the next, my next issue I have with this department here is, uh, the lease and rent of equipment. What are we talking about with the tune of fifty-eight thousand dollars?
The biggest majority of that is our cart lease. We lease sixty-five carts.
That's about right.
We just put it out for bid this past year and negotiated the price down. Last year, we were paying over five thousand per month, and this year we've got it to four thousand, I think it's like four thousand eight hundred.
How much is the?
Yeah, I'm sorry. He also has a port-a-don that he leases as well as some rec that he has cleaned and leased.
Okay, and, uh, the average cost of golf cor, uh, golf cart, if we, if you buy one straight out?
Probably around that price, forty-five hundred.
That's, that's what I was thinking, four or five thousand dollars.
And, and like the cars though, his golf cart leases are just op, they're just operating. At the end, we don't own them. We.
Yeah, we can, we can purchase them at the end of our lease for one dollar.
And how long is the lease?
Four years.
Four-year lease and you've got to give them back?
No, he corrected me that it's last lease. We did put a provision in there. We could buy them if we so desire.
Okay.
By the time the four years is up, the batteries.
Your luggage will get worn out one year.
And, and we even looked into, before we did this last lease agreement, we did look into keeping some of the carts or all the carts and maintaining them ourselves. I mean, those batteries, by the time you put batteries on them and do all that, it, I mean, you're talking about a big expense and then and we negotiated the, the price down. We felt like that would be the best way to go.
So the batteries aren't included in your lease arrangement?
They're included in the leasing agreement, but once, once they hit the four years, those batteries, they, they don't have a certain
They don't hold a charge.
Amount that they'll be covered under warranty. And then once you hit that four years, they're out of warranty. And if you're gonna keep the carts, you, you're gonna have to replace the batteries.
How much of that forty thousand dollars a year is charged in your carts versus the power to the pro shop in the kitchen?
It, I mean, I don't, I don't have a breakdown on that. I, I mean.
Probably a lot.
It's a, it's a big amount. We also, a lot of that goes from our irrigation system as well. We have a pump house that pumps out of the lake, which is a pretty big expense as well. But it's better than paying for all that water.
Okay.
Well, I, I have to like the course, cause I have two hole-in-ones out there. It's the only ones I've ever had, uh. I had to quit playing golf though, cause it was getting too easy.
Yeah, once it gets that point, you gotta quit.
Any, any more questions?
Well, I will say, if we can get every department to reduce their expenses by twenty percent like you had, we'd be in good shape. And so I, I'm just telling you, there's not a single department out there, guys, that had done, that had went from eight hundred and sixty-three thousand to seven hundred and forty-one. That's a huge, huge reduction. And he's not giving himself enough credit for that. And that's a message to the rest of the departments. I mean, that took some, that took some effort, uh, to do that. That's not easy. That's a big number. But that's what it takes. I mean, you gotta really look hard at these numbers. And you guys say, do I need this? Do I not need this? Is there another way of doing this? Uh, and you might find some other things in here that you're not thinking of, so you gotta keep that up.
And I'm, I'm constantly looking and I've been listening to everything y'all are telling me. I'm working on, I've got one event put into place. It's the tris, I mean, the trademark Bristol Junior Amateur Championship. That's gonna happen in July. It's a two-day tournament, which should bring players in from box school and all over there. We'll have college coaches and be giving away college scholarships. So, I mean, I am looking at bringing tournaments in to make people come and stay, stay in the motels and eat.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, Mr. Barnes. Um, you know, and, and I will say, um, Councilman Moonpower is right. You, you, you've got the expense side, you know, you keep cutting and cutting and, um, they've done a good job there. But on the, the revenue side, I know you've come before council before, talking about different things to enhance revenues with the different fee structure and, and different things like that. And, uh, I can't remember when you came, if it was this time last year during the summer. I know it was at a point to where you, you were gonna institute it, I think over the winter, and so. gonna institute it, I think over the winter, and so, ha- have you seen that that's been beneficial?
We have seen, we, we did a special this, starting of this year, uh, on our membership rates, um, we give city residents a discount on their, on their membership, and, um, that's increased, I know just, the membership alone is over ten thousand dollars, and, and it could even increase a little bit more than that before it's all said and done. And that doesn't include the revenue, other revenues that that should bring in, as far as cart fees and other.
As far as you're starting to get more tournaments, this is a suggestion, it may or may not work out, cause I really don't know how it works, but, uh, in your package, is go around to your hotels in the area and say, hey, if I put your hotel is, what kind of rate can you give me for the players in this tournament, and is there any little kickback you can give us, whatever the terminology is, so, you help us, we'll help you by putting your hotel front and center? That's just to suggest it's, I don't really know how any of that works, I just know when I, like, go to a wedding or whatever, they say, here's your hotel.
That's probably something we need to look at on the wording of how that's, uh...
Yeah, well, the word kickback is certainly inappropriate.
And I will say, at this time, I mean, we are selling advertisement signs.
Strike that, your honor.
That would probably be wise.
At this, and at this time, we are selling advertisement signs out on the course, um, we average twenty-six to, about twenty-eight to thirty thousand rounds a year, so that's a pretty good advertisement, um, out here as well.
Well, you know, make sure everybody uses their phone apps today, you know, I don't know if you're, if I go on some of the golf apps, is Clear Creek gonna come up for the trice's here?
That's something our IT guy is checking into.
Yeah, yeah, it's, that's the name of the game nowadays, so when somebody's staying in town for a few days, that's where they're gonna look to see where kinda play golf at.
I'm gonna quit before I get arrested.
Any more questions?
Uh, yeah, I have one, uh, can you think of any negative impact that, uh, leasing, renting kayaks and paddle boats out there would have on the golf course, and where do you stand on that? You pro, con, neutral?
Well, I'll be honest, um, it could bring a liability, um, I mean, if you have paddle boats, golfers, all of them are not...
No, not power boats, they're not ea, they're not allowed on that lake.
I know paddle boats are allowed, they would be allowed, but as far as the golfers, when they're hitting and playing, I mean, there's all kinds of balls that go out into the lake, I mean, we would, it would be very limited to where they could take the boats, the upper end, and I think it's probably too shallow on the upper end for the boats, now down next to the dam area, I'd say that would be okay, but then we had to look at having someone there to get them in and out of the boat safely, and life jackets, and all that, I, I mean, it's something we can definitely look into, uh, if that's what y'all would like for me to do.
Are they prohibited, I mean, if the resident wanted to go out there and put a kayak in and ride around?
No, we just ask that they stay in the center of the lake.
Well, I think you need to, you need to look at that area as more than just a golf course, I mean, that's a really nice, uh, open park, you know, it's got a lake, there's, there's a lot around the golf course, you know, how can you, how can you leverage the rest of that for ways to get people to come out there for different reasons, that's, that's the name of the game, I think, cause people don't think of going out there other than to play golf, but if you could get them out there to play frisbee golf, or get them out there to, you know, have a hiking trail that they can walk on, or a bike trail that they can ride around the hills and be safe at it, you know, that's, that's more, more than just a golf course then.
And we do, we rent the pavilion out on occasion, as long as we don't have a tournament or something like that.
Yeah, for like picnics, or corporate events, or weddings, or whatever, that'd be a good, that's a good revenue generator.
And I would, I would also add too, that, um, the nonprofit organizations that are looking for ways to raise money are asking the city for money, I, I'd be more than willing to help them to have a golf tournament to help generate money.
Yeah, so if, uh, one of the organizations had come to us for funds, you would say, let's go to that organization and say, we'll come to the Clear Creek and have a golf tournament, raise half that, so then we only give, have to give them half the money they've been asking for, that's...
There's some of them, they're, some of them, they're generating ten, twenty thousand dollars per golf tournament, and, I mean, they just need to come see me, talk to me.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a good idea. See Beth Reinhardt back there, maybe she'll do a Chamber of Commerce golf tournament, so you can raise about twenty grand for...
Hi, any, uh, any further questions? All right, well, uh, again, thank you, uh, for coming and answering our questions, Mr. Barnes, and again, uh, thank you for what you're doing in there.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're, we are now at, uh, a quarter till nine, and we are three items in, and we have, uh, still on the agenda, the landfill discussion, and the general discussion with other revenue, uh, what is the pleasure of council, would you like to take up those items tomorrow, we have an item on the agenda tomorrow night to discuss, uh, the budget, I don't know that we had anything specific planned.
He said, I think, Mr. Carr, you talked about the possibility of blocking the golf a little bit of time tomorrow night, it's not a really heavy agenda tomorrow night.
That's, that's right, there's under council discussion, there's a opportunity for y'all to do budget discussion.
I, I, my, my preference, Mr. Harris, my preference is adjourned tonight, I think the longer we go into it, the less we absorb, and landfill free for...
I agree, you agree, is that consensus there?
I'll just leave the sleeping bag in the car, I can leave it tomorrow night.
Wow. Like I say, we do need to, to probably tomorrow, try to, as best as we can finish up, I know today we got on, a little bit on the expense side with the discussion of Parks and Rec and the golf course, but we need to, uh, probably, if we're gonna stay on track to, um, have the, the, the budget and the public hearing on the twenty-third, probably finish with, um, the revenue side tomorrow, and then Saturday really get into the expense side, because again, um, you know, uh, based on our discussions tonight, we've not added to the revenue side, we've actually taken a little bit away, uh, if, if we don't move forward with the proposal the fire chief had, and we delay slightly the, uh, gate at Sugar Hollow, so...
Mr. Mayor, we need a certified revenue number, is what we need.
And we need that as well, and, um...
I will reach out to the commissioner in the morning, see where we stand.
If that, if that number holds, one hundred and thirty's all we can use.
So, we might as well work with the budget on a hundred and thirty?
The, right.
We don't know the two's gonna be there, is the problem, we didn't know about the one, seven, we didn't know about the thirty, now we don't know about the two, so let's just wait, we can figure it out tomorrow.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Right, it's, it's one percent of the...
One percent of the previous.
Right, of the existing, uh, tax levy, and so, it, the rate would have to be adjusted down.
So, if it's two hundred thousand, we have to cut the rate to eighteen and a half cents? One, or an eighteen and a half cents?
Can you do that?
Can you get you?
So, we actually have seventy thousand dollars that we can adjust to the rate, on the downside?
Yeah, we have to take that out of the equation.
If we can't use it, we might as, we, we need to give it back to the people.
It's not, it's not given back to the people, it's just not charged to the people.
Well, okay, whichever way you wanna put it.
Yeah, that's the way I wanna put it.
If all we can do is one thirty, cut the rate.
Yeah, I'd say a half percent would solve the problem, if you can do a half, I don't know why you couldn't. All right.
Some of the former councilmen that we've had for the last twenty or thirty years, they had unique ideas, Ms. Harris, on how to do everything, so I'm sure they could do a half a percent, and basically, it seems like the city government, the people that ran it, ten, twenty years ago, they just went along with it too, I mean, you know, we're lucky, we're lucky we're not in worse shape than we're in, realistically, and... It is what it is.
Okay, so tomorrow night, we will, um, you will try to get from the commissioner of revenue a certified number, we can, uh, discuss that, and I guess, find out for sure if we can bill in half-cent increments, but, uh, did you ask that question as well, I'd, I'd...
We can, that will most likely be part of a discussion on Saturday, uh, if you wanna finish landfill, and anything else you wanna do tomorrow night, uh, maybe keep down the path we're on in terms of answering y'all's questions, however, I will try to get the information tomorrow.
I understand, okay, well, with nothing further, we'll stand adjourned.